Okay, I love hitting whoever's face that is on the tablet. It is the afternoon of March 25th. We have a full agenda today and then afterwards we will go into closed for land acquisition. We have a proclamation to provide individuals to recognize. And then we're going to go into priority Carol. So let's start with the proclamation is Janice Kispert, you on as well?
Yeah.
Good afternoon. So why don't you start it Commissioner Weaver and we'll go from there.
Okay, this is a proclamation for the sexual assault awareness month, April 2021. Whereas sexual assault awareness month is intended to raise awareness for the widespread sexual violence and its public implications to every community member of Carroll. And whereas rape and sexual assault affects our community according to statistics indicating that one out of every six American women and 3% of American men have experienced an attempted or completed rape in their lifetime. We encourage our community to work together to educate about what can be done to prevent sexual violence and help support our survival survivors. And whereas the staff and board of trustees and volunteers at the rape crisis intervention service encourage every person to speak out when witnessing an act of violence and through prevention education, increased awareness and holding perpetrators who commit acts of violence responsible for their actions, we can be successful in reducing sexual violence in Carroll County. Rape crisis intervention service supports the effects efforts of our local partners as well as state and national organizations working to reduce sexual violence. Every citizen actively engaged in conversations about sexual assault is now as we prevent it, how to help survivors receive appropriate services. Probably do better than I here, I got lost. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners to hereby proclaim April 2021 as sexual assault awareness month. We join sexual violence advocates, sexual violence advocates and support service programs in the behalf and understanding of all of our society can work together to better address this issue and be part of the solution to end sexual violence. This is adopted the 18th day of March, signed by all five Board of Commissioners. And Janice, I just want to say thank you for the work you do. You guys do tremendous work. I know you're always working behind the scenes and you're not, you know, you don't get a lot of accolades for what you do, but the people you help really appreciate what you're doing. And we have the proclamation for you and we'll send that to you. Okay, thank you.
And Janice, again, we are to all very blessed to one, have you as a leader within our community, running the RCIS. Sometimes you feel it's unfortunate that we have RCIS in our community, but we are so fortunate that we do because this has not gone away. We are going to continue to work hard for it to breaking the stigma associated with, you know, these atrocities and getting the support necessary. But what I like to do first is hear from you, Janice, on some of your thoughts as we're going into the springtime and opening up also with the pandemic as we know, but welcome.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Commissioners and good afternoon. Thank you for inviting me to sit in. Thank you for again, having the proclamation declaring April sexual assault awareness month. As you mentioned with the pandemic, we have been severely affected. Funding, first of all, second of all, we really think our victims don't realize that we are still open. And a lot of times, as I'm sure you're aware, many of the victims are at home or other places confined with their perpetrator and unable to reach out for services. So we anticipate a lot of call demand for services rather, when the pandemic is over, when things start opening up. And this is so critical and so important why declaring sexual assault awareness month and the awareness is critical. And if you don't mind, if I can also plug our April Welcome On Her Shoes event, that's coming up. We're going to have a virtual event this month. We're going to have two days, April 10th and 11th. You can go to the website and sign up, www.welcomeoncc.org. And please join us and take a stand against sexual violence. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Janice. And let's go around to the Commissioners, thoughts, comments, Commissioner Fraser.
Janice, I just want to say thank you for all that you do, especially for bringing awareness of this out in the public because we've talked before, when you get out there and you talk to people, especially when you put some people in the school system and so forth, you you find out more things, you get more reports because people understand what's going on and what shouldn't actually be going on. So you do a tremendous job. It's a shame that we need your organization in Carroll County, but we do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Boucher.
Thank you for the service you do. I think a lot of people realize that not only is the physical injury taken received by a victim, but more importantly, long term is the psychological and mental impact of being a victim. And I think this is where your organization plays the biggest role in helping those people heal and knowing they're not alone. They don't need to be ashamed of being a victim, that the resources and the people are there to understand and help them heal. So bless your soul and all your staff.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Wentz.
Janice, good afternoon. Thank you and everyone that you're involved with, that is involved with your organization. I just, I'm just going to repeat what everybody else said if I if I go on, but we truly do appreciate your efforts and you guys definitely do make a difference here with a very troubling issue and it's much appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And again, same, all's I would be doing is repeating and amplifying what's already been said. I think the takeaway is you have the full support of the Board of Commissioners, the county. We are very fortunate to have your leadership, you know, with the RCIS and also within our community. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. And I really again appreciate all your continued support for many, many years. And you understand the significance of the issue that we're dealing with and we really appreciate that. And as Commissioner Boucher said, it mental health is huge, huge, huge with with our victims. And that's why our services are free and confidential. So anyone can seek out our services and not have to worry about payment or insurance. Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Casaway, are you on? And Mr. Lyons? And maybe Doug Brown? And I see Chris. Okay. I see Mike. You know, I don't see. Let's see.
Commissioner, I think we have everybody on. We have Rich Lyons, Mike Mariani, who's his immediate supervisor, and Chris Amashu, who's the bureau chief. So you're ready to go when you are, sir.
You on the camera?
Yeah, it's not working, but it's okay.
Okay. Hey Doug, you want to take, kick this off?
Sir, I would be glad to. Thank you for the honor. So obviously, as you heard and what sometimes happens, they are working on it behind the scenes. We're here today to honor Richard Eric Lyons. And I'm going to let Chris Amashu and Mike obviously get into the details, but I will tell you that with every one of these, unfortunately, for the county that we have the opportunity to bring for you, it always sets in my mind that we lose a great deal of institutional knowledge from a gentleman who has had, in my mind, since I've been in this position, an impeccable reputation. I personally took a tour and met him on site of one of the last bridges that he inspected. And he's just a fantastic individual who is eager to share his knowledge. So without further ado, I'll turn this over to Chris to give you Eric's history and then back to you.
Thank you. Eric started with the county in July 6th of 1981. He was hired as a survey helper. And then in 1903, he became Inspector One and then was promoted to Inspector Two in 2014. Over those years, Eric has inspected over 350 miles of roadway projects, 33 bridge projects and numerous public works agreement projects and storm drain projects. He's been married for almost 40 years, five grandchildren and one more on the way in September. In his free time, while he's not inspecting our roadways and bridges, he's the current vice president of the Carroll County Coin Club. He also enjoys gardening and playing his guitar and banjo. As Doug said, Eric will sorely be missed as part of our engineering team, but we wish him well and hope he enjoys his retirement here in Carroll County.
Okay. Maybe.
I think Mike has passed the baton on to me.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Where are you at? Okay, Chris?
Yeah, I think Mike's just here for moral support.
Okay, I got it. Okay. Okay, before we we hand it off, let's just go around the room. Commissioner Boucher.
Well, Mr. Lyons, it's nice to see someone else named Eric going by their middle name. And I'm a big fan of the banjo. I hope you like Ralph Stanley because he's awesome. I love bluegrass music. Well, it's neat to see someone come in an entry level position and work their way through the system and do a tremendous job. Like it was Metro, we lose a lot of institutional knowledge when people retire such as yourself. So hopefully on your way out, you've been able to mentor some younger employees of the county and pass on your knowledge. And I wish you the best in your retirement. Go play some banjo.
Okay. Commissioner Wentz.
So Eric, good to see you. We've seen you out on the streets a lot and you know, I say this all the time. I mean, somebody who puts in that amount of time in county government deserves an incredible amount of credit. We truly do appreciate all your efforts. As with all, your fingerprints will be on the county here for a long time because you've, I don't know that there's not a site you probably haven't visited when it comes to the things that you've accomplished. So we truly do appreciate it. You're one ahead of me on the grandchild thing. So congrats on that one. And listen, just enjoy. As I tell a lot of folks, I tried that retirement gig for about six months and it sure was sweet. And I'm going to be rapidly getting back there, I believe, soon. So enjoy yourself, enjoy your family and most of all, thank you for putting in that amount of time for the citizens of our county. Well done and Godspeed to you, Eric. Take care.
Commissioner Weaver.
Hey, you know, when you inspect that amount of roads, you have to drive home going down these roads, looking and see if we made a mistake or not, or all the good things you did. You have, I know you're not watching the, you're truly watching the roads on the way home, that's what I mean to say on that. But thank you for what you've done. And as Commissioner Wentz said, you're going to be remembered for a long time, at least until the roads start to deteriorate. So thank you for what you've done and look, enjoy your retirement. Mine lasted two days and look what I got into. So do a better job.
Hey, you got an opportunity to serve with Commissioner Wentz.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, Commissioner Fraser.
There's always that. I want to thank you for the time you put in for the county. I really do appreciate it. 39 plus years is tremendous. I don't know if I feel quite as safe driving down the roads now that you're gone. Hopefully someone steps in to fill the void. And that's another thing, when you when you leave and people like you leave, there is a void left behind and we have to consciously work to try to fill up voids like that. But I really do appreciate everything that you've done and good luck with the next grandchild.
And sir, just want to say, you know, sometimes we look at, again, what we leave behind, the legacy we leave behind. And the legacy I think you're leaving behind is the selfless service that you provided to our community and to our county. So with that, I can really only say thank you and thank you for all that you've done. You know, taking care of us in the community, our neighbors in Carroll County. And with that, let me pass it on to you, Eric. What are your thoughts?
I appreciate you saying the nice things about me and it's it's been fun. Some pretty tough, but some of them were very enjoyable. So thank you.
Okay. Roberta, did you have, you want to share?
Oh, just well wishes on your retirement and hope it's long and healthy and very enjoyable. Wish you the very best. Godspeed.
Okay. Okay, gentlemen, thank you so much. Let's walk through priority Carol. I don't want to say in a rapid fashion, but in a way that we can get through it and move on to our agenda. So with that said, Commissioner Weaver.
I just want to say, keep Carol safe. Mask, distance and wash hands. Very simple. That's what I'm going to leave it at.
Okay. Commissioner Fraser.
I kind of echo what Commissioner Weaver said. The numbers have basically plateaued in some areas and started going up in others. It's not over yet. Be vigilant. Also, we had, I think it was the last meeting for the Mako Legislative Committee this past week. I would say something, but Mr. Fowler is going to be in here and he'll cover all that much better than I could.
Commissioner Boucher.
Thank you. I want to state that kayak season is upon us and that the Double Pipe Creek Park kayak ramp is fully open. They got the last of the rails installed. There it is. So you can take your kayaks down to the water and launch out. Also, we have two other sites in the county, one on Lucas Street and Union Bridge and the other one Haps Mill up on Big Pipe Creek. These are accessible. You can get out there. And the latest data is showing that we as Americans are becoming more obese throughout COVID with all the policies and restrictions. So I cannot emphasize enough how important it is for all of us to get out there and utilize our assets or park and rec, go for walk, go kayaking and get in good shape. I also want to commend Governor Hogan for getting his health straight. I think he was much heavier to begin this pandemic and he has improved his health. And I think he set a wonderful example for all citizens throughout the state to exercise and eat right because it is our best defense. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Wentz.
Okay, rapidly. Last night was the Outstanding Teacher Awards that the chamber puts on. I think there were like 700 nominees this year. I'll go out on a limb and say what the teachers have put up with the last year, they probably all should have been nominated. But we can't thank them enough. There's been a whole lot of challenges with with their profession. So on behalf of all of us, if you were, whatever, if you were nominated or not, we need to continue to thank our teachers. It's they've had a tough job and well, I'll just leave it at that because I probably get myself in trouble if I go any further than that. But thank you to the teachers and all the folks that work for Carroll County Public Schools, from the bus drivers, the nurses, everybody. So last night was that event. You can still see it if you want. Chamber did a pretty good job. Commissioner Fraser mentioned Mako. I will say just for everybody's interest that they are planning on having their scaled down version of the summer conference this year, which is actually scheduled for August 18th through the 21st. They're actively working with the town of Ocean City. The convention center has a 50% capacity at this time, so it's going to be challenging. There's also a lot of parameters around food and what you can do within that convention. So it's going to look nothing like it used to. And out of the gate, as we were discussing it in the board meeting prior to yesterday's legislative meeting, it's going to be limited to a certain amount of individuals probably from each county. So it's not going to be this all hands go to the beach type thing that we've seen in the past. Hopefully by August, we'll have some of those. Hopefully by August, we'll have some of those parameters that are relaxed. But as I think we're going to hear from Ed Singer soon, I wouldn't get too excited because I believe we're still up, we're up over 5% again. So troubling, we're in troubling area right now. And also the National Association of Counties. Mako is hosting that on July the 9th at the National Harbor in Prince George's County. That was supposed to occur in Texas. But they moved it to National Harbor and Maryland Association of Counties is hosting that. So that's a big honor as well. Other than that, stay safe. Positivity rates up. We're going to hear that in a minute. And I think that's all I got.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Okay, I think the National Association of Counties just wanted to make sure they had power, so they brought it up here instead.
Texas Power. Okay.
Oh, I get it. Yeah.
Until I was weirdly interrupted, I will now start. Yeah, just to segue Commissioner Wentz, not Commissioner Frazier, on the COVID-19, we are, my understanding, over that 5% highest since we've been since mid-February. Wearing these masks are still very important. You know, there are no exceptions in going into certain places like government buildings and restaurants and retail in wearing the masks until you're, you know, instructed either not to because of like restaurants and things like that. But, you know, let's just continue to stay safe, continue to work hard in supporting our community and getting through this. And we will be talking more about that from Mr. Singer along with the vaccines and the vaccination process here in Carroll County. The partnership we're having with Life Bridge is just phenomenal. And with the community across the state. One thing for the Carroll County, for our community, to be aware, there are six grants that are being funneled through economic development through our county team. Everything from nonprofits to hotels to restaurants. And we are now working on getting the details of these grants, getting the best path forward to become efficient and effective in getting this money out to our county. I just ask, stay tuned, stay aware of these these dollars that are going to be coming out. And we will try to be as proactive as possible in getting it out to the widest distribution. Because like we started back in March, April, when we took $600,000, $800,000 of county money, the theme was not to leave a dollar on the table and was to make sure that our community that is well-deserving gets the dollars available to them. Let's see. You know, one thing just to, you know, I'm always reminded, especially with the pledge and opportunity just to take a moment of silence, is to thank all of our first responders, those men and women in red, green, and blue. Those first responders like our nurses taking care of our patients dealing with COVID, whether it's the vaccinations, the testing, or those in the hospitals. And the reason I'm bringing this up is today is actually Medal of Honor Day. In March 25th in 1863 was the beginning of the Medal of Honor. And although we recognize that as a ultimate sacrifice and ultimate, you know, award given for incredible heroic actions that have only been given to about 3,500 folks, it reminds me not just of them, but of all of us that are serving. And it's important not to just recognize those 3,500, but all that are serving in our communities. And last, on Saturday night, it is the beginning of Passover. So those that are celebrating, wishing them a very happy holiday and a very happy Passover starting at sundown on Saturday. Okay. Have there been any additional state directives, anything from Mako we need to be aware of dealing with COVID-19 specific? I know the governor spoke about the vaccines and we'll get into that.
This conference will now be recorded.
Anything else? Steve? No? Okay. Okay, let's get right on to it. Is Mr. Singer on?
He is.
Yeah, there we go. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Just was out at the North Carroll Senior Center this morning. Got a really nice vaccination clinic running there. That's an incredible facility. I live up in the North Carroll area and I'd been to several of the senior centers before, but the senior center up there is quite a, quite a nice facility. It's really conducive to running a vaccination clinic. It was interesting to me, we've worked really hard to get to the folks that are over 75 and, you know, we're getting into these other phases now that we're still able to get some of these people coming out of the woodwork that are over 75 that we still want to reach. And I think we had about 150 to 200 people over the age of 75 registered for our clinic this morning. And I actually saw former Commissioner Gooch there and a bunch of folks that I know from up in the North Carroll area. So it was, it was good morning. I always feel good when we're getting people vaccinated and trying to get to the end of this COVID-19 pandemic. The one thing that I'll mention before we get started, and I've had a little fun with some people on this one as we've gone gone along, the, the state did put out an order this week that directs local health officers to follow the the state's prioritization on distribution of vaccine. And I don't think we would have handled anything differently as we've moved through this because we've really gotten to a lot of our highest risk population and whatnot. But I mentioned to you last week that I thought we were ready to start moving along with the phases the state had anyway. But it essentially says that we have to follow the state phases and that, you know, that we can't, we can't hold to an earlier phase. Now, that's not to say, and the governor even said this in his press conference, that we can't prioritize people who are in Phase 1A, B, and C over other people. It's just that when we open up our clinics, we do have to offer it to people who are in the appropriate phases. So you know, we're going to continue to create clinics, try to front load them with people who are at the highest risk, and then open it to other people who are in these other phases. And and it's only based on the amount of vaccine that we have available. So just because somebody's in a certain phase and it's now available to a certain age group or or a certain part of the population, that doesn't mean that they're going to necessarily be able to get vaccinated right away. But I do think vaccines becoming more and more available and we're getting there. It was very slow in the beginning, but things are really starting to pick up pace wise. And the help from Life Bridge has made a huge difference. As we get into the slides, we could talk about some of that. Alrighty. Just need to find my arrow. Here we go. Sometimes you get, you get lost where things are on your screen. One of the things that I started sharing with you all last week at your request was our total cases per 100,000 as it relates to the the school metrics and kind of where we are. We are in a, according to the positivity rate, which would stand at a 5.3% average, we're at a moderate risk of transmission this week. It went, we were low as of the previous four weeks. When you bust that 5% threshold, that has us in an area that's considered to be high. Our total number of cases per 100,000 has us in an area where we're in that, kind of in that orange area where we're a little less than 100, but still at a fairly substantial level of transmission in Carroll County. So, you know, as you all said, this isn't over yet. We're hopefully going to get there, but it's, we're seeing still relatively high rates of transmission. This chart, I think, really reflects where we truly are on our cases. Last week, we had roughly 300, 300 cases of COVID when you count the confirmed PCR tests and the probable cases. Our confirmed PCR tests were actually down by two cases from the week before, but the number of presumptive cases based on the antigen, rapid antigen tests pushed this up higher. It has the, has the trend continuing to move higher with the number of cases that we're seeing in Carroll County. This is just our 14-day rolling average on the confirmed tests. And the, I guess the age where we're really seeing the most cases right now are in that 45 to 64-year-old age group. Hospitalizations, we were really good shape with the hospital a couple of weeks ago. Right now, the last couple of weeks, we've been in the mid-20s, which is about where we were during the initial peak in the pandemic with number of people who were hospitalized based on COVID. And actually, a couple of pediatric cases, which is unusual. We've not had a lot of pediatric cases that have been hospitalized, but there were a couple of pediatric cases that were hospitalized this week at Carroll Hospital Center. Our hospitalizations and deaths by age group. And we had a death that we thought was probable last week that I had mentioned, but it actually wound up not being a confirmed COVID death. So so we had not had any COVID deaths in the last two weeks. However, I did see one that was reported yesterday that is a confirmed case. So we'll have our, you know, we had kind of a nice lull as the, as the as the cases had seemed to hit that low point. And as always, the hospitalizations lagged the cases, which, and a death followed behind that. So we've seen another death in the community this week from COVID, which is unfortunate. Our testing, our testing seems to be hovering around about 50, 50 tests per day when we're open, still three days a week at the agricultural center. We've scaled that back a bit and only running one lane as opposed to the two or three lanes we were having to run when we were at the peak of testing. But we are still running three days a week and we're going to continue to evaluate whether this is necessary and whether we'd scale this back further. But right now, we're definitely meeting any need or demand as far as that testing is concerned. Now, getting into the big thing that everybody is wanting to hear about is when is it my turn to get vaccinated and kind of where are we in Carroll County? And this is just that the chart is the state's kind of laid it out at this point in time. And right now, we're in Phase 2A, which in addition to all the people who are over 65 and educators and and continuity of government and things of that nature, includes people who are over the ages 60. So we've started scheduling people who are over 60 and actually have been vaccinating them. And in Phase 2B, which starts March 30th, with the state, Marylanders who have underlying medical conditions and are at severe risk of COVID illness will be eligible to be vaccinated. I think I prefer to talk from the next chart. Just, I'll let you take a quick look at this.
Hey, Ed, just real quick. The president also announced, I thought it was yesterday or day before, that all veterans, regardless of age, are now eligible to get vaccinated.
Okay, I haven't heard anything from the state on that. And we are required under the order for us to follow the state's priorities. So I assume if the state's going to follow whatever the president put out, I'll have to look into that, Commissioner. But if, and I'm not sure whether they're offering, I do know that I know a number of veterans that have been able to get vaccinated through the VA. And I'm not sure if the intent is that you'd have to get vaccinated through the VA or if if we're going to be prioritizing that on the state level. I'll ask, we have a vaccine call on Fridays. I'll ask that question and make sure I get clarification on that because we've been specifically told to stick to the categories that the state's put out. But I will check on that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
This is our vaccine distribution. And as you can see, the big increase in numbers on the allocated doses is because of the the doses that Life Bridge has shared with us the last couple of weeks. Last week, we gave, we had 1,700 doses allocated and we had kind of pre-used some of the doses the week before that when we gave, we had 1,000 allocated. We gave out 1,454 doses. This week, we had 1,700 allocated this past week and administered 1,600 doses. This week, including the Life Bridge doses, we have a total of 2,200 doses that we're able to administer. And as of yesterday, we had administered 1,046 of those. We have 500, I think roughly 515 people scheduled up at Hampstead today. And we have an additional 970 people scheduled for a clinic tomorrow at the Westminster Senior Center. And one of the things that we're starting to do is we're getting out of, you know, with people who are over the age of 75 and over the age of 65 who are largely retired, our focus was on trying to get out geographically so that it was easier for them to get to our clinics and focus on making sure we could reach them in their communities. And we were doing a lot of our clinics during the daytime and only a few of our clinics in the evenings. We're going to probably start doing less geographically diverse clinics and start varying the times more so that it's suitable for people who are who are working. Because a lot of the, a lot of the people that are in these phases that are coming up or actively working, we're going to start doing more weekend clinics and more evening clinics. And I don't think I mentioned last week, but we're looking at transitioning to the Westminster Town Mall in anticipation of the senior centers reopening and wanting to make sure that the seniors have use of those facilities. The Town Mall will probably also give us the ability to put a larger number of people through because the space is bigger than what we have in the, in the current Westminster Senior Center. We're going to continue probably to do some clinics in, up in the northern part of the county at the North Carroll Senior Center on occasion and down at the South Carroll Senior Center on occasion. But we're not going to be doing as many of those different geographic locations, but we're going to be varying the times more so that it's more suitable for the people who are working and and have more of an ability to travel. It's just the time generally tends to be inconvenient for a lot of folks who are working. So we're trying to accommodate that. This chart, it's really hard for us to deal, figure out with the 1C part. We're going to try to come up with better numbers for that. I know that we vaccinated more than 69 people who are in the essential workers category, but we're going to try to come up with some good numbers with that. We have registered people who are in 1C and they're getting vaccinated this week and next week. A lot of people who are in that 65 to 74 category are registered for this week and next week. And I think those numbers are going to change very significantly over the week. I'm worried about 75% of our adults over the age of 75 that are vaccinated. And I think we have probably another 5 to 10% of those people scheduled. And aside from that, I think most of them either don't want to be vaccinated or just starting to come around. It was had the opportunity this morning to talk to a couple who hadn't registered for the clinic and we were able to squeeze them in because they were, they were in their, in their 80s. And you know, some people are starting to understand, they're seeing their neighbors get the vaccine and they're realizing that it's safe and it's effective. And it's really a good way to be able to start spending time with their families again. And the CDC has some guidance out there about, you know, what's safe for people once they're vaccinated. And I encourage people to take a look at that. But it's helping people who are in our older adult community where they've been so disconnected from everybody, all of their friends and family members. This is really good for them to get the opportunity to start reconnecting. And one of the most important things when it comes to cognitive decline, and I sat on the Alzheimer's Commission for a while for the state, is for older adults to have engagement with other people. And this has been a really rough year for them and getting them vaccinated and and having them safe has been really important. And I think we've done a really good job with that. Again, with the help of Life Bridge, we've actually cleared our whole list of homebound clients. I thought that was going to be really hard for us to do because vaccinating 1,000 people in one location is relatively easy. And we can do that in a matter of six hours or so. But vaccinating 10 people in 10 different locations in Carroll County takes just as long. It takes a couple of nurses and it's very resource intensive. But we've vaccinated about 65 people in their, in their own homes that are unable to leave the home to go get vaccinated in cooperation with Life Bridge. We have a few more scheduled. And we, like I said, we've cleared our list of people who are homebound. So again, the important message to people is if you're over the age of 75, you can call me personally or you can email me personally. And I put that information out there on a number of occasions. And we'll make sure that we get you registered. People who are 65 to 74 now, we're really trying to concentrate on that group and call our call center. If you haven't been able to get an appointment, we'll get you in. Vaccines becoming more plentiful and more available. And people who are in that age group of 60 and essential workers that we're trying to reach at this point. And in Phase 2, we're gathering lists, we're sending out emails, we're sending out links, and we're getting people registered. The important thing for people to realize is Phase 2, when we talk about people with underlying health conditions and when we talk about the essential workers in we and when we talk about the essential workers in one C, I want to make sure that I'm going back to one C to talk about what is covered there. It talks about lab services, food and agricultural production, manufacturing, US Postal Service, public transit transit and grocery stores. What it doesn't include, and I've had a lot of frustrated restaurant and bar workers, it does not include those people at this point in time. The state's planning on opening two C April thirteenth. And and this will be a a huge change for people and that'll include Marylanders who are over the age of fifty five, essential workers in in critical industries, including construction workers, food service workers, utilities, transportation, financial services, IT and other infrastructure workers. So that's going to open it up to a lot of lot of new categories of people who aren't presently qualified. I I know people who that that work in the restaurant and the food industry have been doing this since the pandemic began, whether they've been serving carryout or outdoor dining or or whatnot. But they're still not eligible for vaccination until April the thirteenth. So it's a couple of weeks off, about three weeks off yet. So I'd ask you to be patient. We're going to get to you. You'll you'll be able to get vaccinated. It's just that it's not your turn yet and that that's coming soon. I do want to talk a little bit about our phase two B people, Marylanders who with the underlying health conditions. Essentially, we're allowing people to self certify that they have one of the CDC listed health conditions and that information is available on our website. You can take a look and and see if you have one of those chronic conditions. The other thing, though, that I've been doing has been working with our our local doctors. I've I've said all along that people should talk to their doctors to help them get prioritized. And and a lot of our our local medical providers know who their priority patients are. And and we're working to try to make sure that we've got those people prioritized first and we can reach out to them first and and ensure that they're given an opportunity to get vaccinated in this phase two B because they're most at risk of potentially having adverse outcomes from COVID. There's a lot of information in a relatively short period of time on this, but I think it's good information, important information for the public to know where we are and where we're going. I do think that vaccine is going to be probably in another month, pretty much available to 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 most people. And and as as I've heard the president say that, and and I believe the governor said by by the beginning of May, should be available to just about anybody who who wants to be vaccinated. And of course, that's going to be available, be based on the amount of vaccine that's available. Our our overall distribution of vaccine, when we talk about our our certain populations, as I mentioned, with our seventy five plus age group, we're we're in overall seventy five percent of of all the people over seventy five have been vaccinated in Carroll County. And in the black community, we're actually at eighty two point four percent in that group. Having a difficult time reaching the Hispanic community and they're they're a very small number in our county. But we can continue to try to find ways to to reach people in that community who would need to be vaccinated. Our sixty five plus, we're at overall, we're at sixty four point seven percent total of everybody who's over the age of sixty five has been vaccinated. And we're going to see a lot more of those people get vaccinated this week with the vaccine that Life Bridge shared with us that gives us that additional ability to reach a lot of those people in that population during this two week period while we've got this extra vaccine. So the these are where we have clinics scheduled in the upcoming weeks. And of course, our website, there's a lot of good information there. We work really hard to try to keep you up to date as to what's happening. And you know, this this actually, this presentation gets posted there as well as any current information related to COVID. I'm going to stop there and give you all any an opportunity to ask any questions you might have and I'll stop sharing and then.
Thanks, Ed. And I think if you had a yellow hat, I'd be calling you Bob the Builder, but that's, you know, just what.
This is this is my prison orange, as we've been joking about, because if I don't follow the governor's the distribution plan, I can go to, I could be criminally prosecuted at this point.
Well, I'm glad that's not happening. Okay. Are there any questions or comments?
Just got a quick question, Ed. What happened to the Johnson Johnson vaccine? I notice we had it for a week and we're not, we don't have it anymore.
Well, we we got a one time distribution. The state told us, don't expect to necessarily get anymore. I think they're sending some of it to the mass vaccination sites. I I can't tell you specifically where 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 they're using it. I I do think the state's received some more of it, but none of the local health departments have been getting it. We had requested to be able to get some of it, but you know, there there are good places where where it makes more sense to use the Johnson and Johnson. It's the whole the the whole thing of only needing to get one shot and not not being able to follow up. Works really good with certain transient populations where where you might, for instance, in the detention center where you've got congregate living or potentially with homeless populations and all where it may be hard to get somebody to come in for a second shot. I mean, the the efficacy of the shots are all relatively really good. They're all relatively safe, so it's a little more inconvenient to have to get two shots. I understand that. But but you know, again, the important thing is, is if you can get vaccinated, get vaccinated. We need to get a large percentage of the population vaccinated so that we can we can have enough immunity that we can get back closer to normal. And and I I would encourage you to get any shot that you can get. And unfortunately, I can't answer your question really, Commissioner, but again, it's whether we get Johnson and Johnson or not, I I just want to get everybody vaccinated. And and you know what, I'll tell you, this Pfizer vaccine that we got from the hospitals, a real pain in the butt because it's got that sub zero storage requirement. You have to dilute it and you have to defrost it. And and it's a it's a hassle to work with. But you know what, if if they give it to me again, it was a lot of work for the staff this week, we'd do it again because because that's what's necessary. I like having the Moderna. It's relatively easy for us to work with. The Johnson and Johnson is convenient, but again, the important thing is to get people vaccinated regardless of which vaccine is available.
Hey Ed, totally un, I shouldn't ask the question, I guess. It's totally unfair. But what do you see as your target date to have Carroll County vaccinated? Do you have any idea in mind in the future?
So give me another hundred and forty thousand doses. We'll get it done as quickly as we can, as we can put it in people's arms. I I think a lot of that depends on Commissioner, I really realistically, as I thought through, I I've actually thought about this and thought where we might be. And it's it's I thought that the president was being overly optimistic to think that we could have a large number of people vaccinated by midsummer. But we may have most of the people that we want to have vaccinated by, you know, late June, early July. And then then the the difficulty is going to be is you may have twenty percent of the people that are sitting on the fence about whether they want to get vaccinated or whether they don't want to get vaccinated and trying to convince those people to get vaccinated will be what we'll be working on at that point in time. So we've kind of got a a pretty easy audience right now where a lot of people really want to get vaccinated. They want to be safe from COVID. There there are also people that have some reservations about getting the shot. And and at some point in time, we're going to need to be convincing those people to get vaccinated. So to answer your question, I think anybody who wants a shot probably will be able to get a shot by, at least by early July, I would think. And then then we'll be working on trying to get people vaccinated who have questions about whether they really want to or not and whether it's the right thing to do. But you know, we we really, we do need to get to a certain percentage. And I think targets are seventy or eighty percent of our population vaccinated if we really want to have this under control and and want to get away from, I know there's a lot of people that want to get away from having to wear masks and and being able to live our lives a little bit more like we used to. So we, it's going to take a little bit of effort on all of our parts. Does that, does that answer your question, Commissioner, or?
Yeah, thank you for answering a totally unfair question.
Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Singer, I want to applaud you and your staff for implementing the homebound vaccination program. For those of us who've had have relatives that are homebound, this was a blessing. I know it's difficult, but it sets a lot of people's minds at ease that have relatives that are homebound. So thank you and bless all your staff. Also want to commend you. I think you look fantastic in workers clothes. It sends a message to the public that you're out there on the front line helping with this. You're not just in the office. And I absolutely love that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Commissioner. And I have to tell you, being at the vaccination clinics, I'd rather do that than be here talking to you, quite frankly. It's 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 very rewarding. It's just to see the it's actual joy that you see on some of these people's faces that they know that they finally kind of feel a little more comfortable that they're a little safer now. Cancer patients and elderly people, I mean, it it really makes a difference for them. And and it's something that that we're really happy to be able to to bring to the citizens in Carroll County.
Okay, anything else? I know that the governor mentioned the six additional regional centers. Hagerstown is opening up on the thirty first of March and then you can go from there to Montgomery County, Hartford County, I think Ballmer County, Howard County, between April and May for those six additional regional centers. So those that do want to go outside of the health department to CVSs or others, they can go there. Did we lose Ed? Is he still on by chance? Ed, you still there?
He's there.
I'm here. I just I clicked the, I clicked my camera off. I'm back.
Okay.
We appreciate that.
The only, I guess, question, actually more of a comment that I want to hear from you is I still see on talk shows and social media and all this other stuff about masks, about vaccinations. Is there a reason why we should not be wearing masks or is there a reason why we should not be getting vaccinated? Because everybody's got their opinions. I'm absolutely not a health profession. I'm not a doctor. I don't play one on TV. I'm not a lawyer. I don't play one of those on TV, thank goodness. But it's just, it's becoming very confusing, especially as we're moving in the direction we're moving. And now it's going from the masses to the 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 smaller amounts. You know, it's always, it's easy to get the the large chunk. Now it's, you know, let's get the the rest. So how can we continue to promote either the good, you know, practices that we need to have, but also the convincing piece about the vaccinations? Do you have any opinions on those?
Well, let me start. There there are two things there that you you've talked about. One is the the mask and the face covering. I know they're they're a hassle and I know a lot of people don't like to wear them. And I I know that people feel like they in infringe upon their own freedoms. And and I I I've said this from the very beginning, I think it's all about taking care of each other and trying to protect each other. And until we have this pandemic somewhat under control and and that could be another several months, I think we need to take all the steps we can. And you know, I'm fully vaccinated because because I'm the incident commander for COVID and I needed to get vaccinated and I know it's safe and I know it's effective. But but that doesn't mean I can go go around not wearing a mask. It's it's we we don't have something branded on us that says this person's safe and this person's not safe and this person's vaccinated and this person's not vaccinated. While the virus is spreading in our community at a rate where 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 we essentially have a high level of community spread, we need to follow, we all need to follow the same rules. We need to take care of each other. And whether whether I like it or not, you know, I I don't, I can't say that I take any great joy in wearing a mask every day. But it's gotten to be something that's, it's a minor inconvenience to let us live our lives and and to be able to be able to go out and interact and 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 do some more normal activities. I went to a to a high school soccer game for the for the first time in in well over a year and and watched my nephew play. And it was nice to be able to get out there and see him playing sports. Everybody had on mask. I know, you know, not everybody likes that. And and we don't want to have to be doing this forever, but we need to keep it from, keep the disease from spreading as best we can until we get get through this pandemic and the numbers come down significantly. The vaccination piece, everybody's going to have their own opinion on that, but it's just like any other vaccine. And you know, back in the eighteen hundreds, there were were people against all kinds of vaccinations of diseases that we've now eradicated from from our from our lives. And and you know, there's really, I I can't give you a reason that you shouldn't be vaccinated at this point in time. But not everybody's going to want to listen to the local health officer telling them that this that this vaccine is safe and it's effective. Everybody, well, most people have a doctor and and I would suggest talking to your family physician about it. There's a, there's really, the 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 number of people that would have any type of reaction that would would be a problem with this vaccine is 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 extremely small. It's it's more safe than the than the flu vaccine and other vaccines that are egg based because it's it's less likely that anybody could have any type of allergic reaction to this vaccine. So I I highly encourage people who are who are concerned about the vaccine to do the research, read the literature and then talk to your doctor. You know, a lot of us know, if you don't have a good relationship with your doctor and you don't have a doctor you you can trust, you you need to find another doctor. And and not everybody knows me personally and and you could, you can listen to what I have to say and you can read what the CDC has to say and you can read the studies that are out there about this vaccine. It's a safe vaccine. It's an effective vaccine. And there there's really no reason that anybody that's over the age of eighteen or over the age of sixteen, if you can get Pfizer, can't be vaccinated. But I would encourage people, if they have reservations about it, to talk to their physician and 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 make that decision. We we've vaccinated some very medically fragile people, some people who are in end stage kidney disease and end stage cancers and things of that nature, just I I can think of a personal experience in talking to somebody I know that told me, they said, you know, I don't know if I've got two days to live, two weeks to live, six weeks to live or six months to live, but I don't want to die of COVID and I don't want to make people feel uncomfortable that they come around me and they could potentially give me COVID that would kill me because of my underlying health conditions with cancer. And this gives me an opportunity to reconnect with those people. So you you know, we we are vaccinating people who are very medically fragile. And and I won't tell you that the vaccine has no side effects because, you know, I've personally known people who who have had and and felt a little bit sick, especially after the second dose, the day after the second dose. And we actually had the the situation down in Winfield where a number of teachers wound up out from school. But it's a, it's kind of a one day thing. And to me personally, it's it's worth feeling a little bit bad one day than potentially winding up in the hospital or potentially dying from COVID and and really wanting to bring this thing to an end as much as people who 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 want to want not to wear masks, want not to wear masks. We're only going to get there if we can get a lot of people vaccinated and and really end the spread of this disease in our community. We need to, we need to take care of each other and that's my basic message and been my message throughout this whole pandemic. So thanks for asking that question. I think it's a good one.
Absolutely, and appreciate the the thoughts and advice and also the consistency in that messaging. Any, anything else? Okay, again, thanks. And I think you're, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Mr. Singer, when the day comes, you don't have to wear a mask. It'll be a much more handsome Carroll County.
Well, the mask burning party.
Okay, I think, Ed, you're staying on because now we're moving into some potential funding for Not in Carroll. Maybe for the opioid issues for FY twenty two. Miss Celine, I see you. Is Sue coming on? I see something about fish oil and omega three with Sue Doyle.
Sue, we want to see you, not your, not your phone and your your omega three fish oil, if that's possible. I'm on with the commissioners. They'd like to see you on your camera. Sue.
Okay, until that happens, Celine, you want to take this or who who wants to start this?
Ed, I'm going to toss it to you because I got the train here for right now, honking in my background.
Well, I was gonna, and and I need to pull something up. I I just I, you know, I I don't want to get into all the details about this, but I I guess I I just wanted to share. You guys have the briefing paper in front of you and I was going to let Celine take the lead on this one. But I I got something from one of my staff that was was shared about the I I got to find the daggone thing real quick. I figured I'd have a couple of seconds between the agenda items, but it didn't. So it's it's my fault.
Take a pause. Celine, go ahead.
Yeah, I can step in now. I'm sorry. Of course, I was sitting here watching you speaking the whole time, Ed, and there was no train. And as soon as it's time for us to come on, the train comes. It's it's perfect timing, but but it was a short train, so I'm I'm lucky. But Commissioners, what we wanted to do today was really just come before you as you're prepping the the budget for FY twenty two and just talk about the continued proposal for the Not in Carroll funding and the commitment that we have for the the use towards opioid issues for fiscal year twenty two. The Senior Opioid Policy Group reviews priorities for this funding. This is funding that's budgeted each year. It was a three hundred thousand dollar allocation. And through that funding, the Senior Opioid Policy Group identifies priorities for where that funding would be best used. And I think that we have utilized this for two different projects over the past year that have been both very successful. Ed will speak to the mobile crisis team and I would, I will speak to the after school programming that the vendor for that programming is the Boys and Girls Club of Westminster. And Ed, if if you are Um, and Ed, if if you are ready now, I can turn it over to you to talk about mobile crisis and then I'll I'll jump in and talk about the Boys and Girls Club of Westminster and the after-school programming that's done, um, at the middle schools through them.
Yep, sure. So I I'll just step in and and Sue, you can you can share some data if you want after I just kind of share this anecdote and and my thoughts on mobile crisis, but I really think, uh, this is an investment in our community and 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 eventually getting people into, uh, treatment. The whole, the the importance of mobile crisis is, uh, is is getting people that that are that are having crisis, whether it's a substance use issue or another type of behavioral health type crisis, getting them engaged, uh, meeting them where they are and and getting them into treatment so that we can get them well, so that they're not constantly having to use our our police resources, our EMS resources, our hospital resources and other resources to deal with that crisis. We we get in there, we mitigate the crisis, we 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 get the person navigated to treatment. I want to take just a minute here to read a a an email that was sent to us, uh, from one of the, one of the police officers. I think you know, you could, you could talk to the police and 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 find out how much of a a great tool they think mobile crisis is to them and to our to our other first responders in dealing with, uh, with with clients that they see on a regular basis. But it says, I wanted to take a moment to drop you a quick note regarding certain individual who, uh, was, uh, two certain individuals from the mobile crisis team, and I'm not going to use their names, who responded to a residence um, in Carroll County for a hotline for a suicidal person. Uh, we've, we've been able, uh, to be at this particular residence frequently over the past month or so, four times in the last seven to ten days for her being intoxicated, injured from a fall, et cetera. This latest response resulted in getting the, uh, person to agree to enter into a rehab program in Haverty Grace, Maryland. And what stood out to me, and this is the the officer's words, was, uh, the two mobile crisis team people was their combat passion, their eagerness to help this person and their tireless efforts to locate a facility that her health insurance would cover. They they watched as they, uh, doggedly worked on their cell phone, talking to numerous people to try to find a way to make it happen. They went above and beyond for this young lady because they care and it really showed. Um, so, you you know, these kind of things where, and it's not just one and done necessarily. If 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 we're engaged there and we we get the the situation deescalated, mobile crisis team is re-engaging to make sure that not only did we find a rehab spot for that person to go to, but that the next day that the person is actually, uh, making their appointment and and that it's making a difference for for those people so that we can save their lives. And and it's it's, you know, and not only saving the individuals, but it's also saving resources for the county by getting these people well so that we're we're not using high cost EMS and, uh, an emergency, uh, room and 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 other medical treatment. So uh, it it was, it was nice that the officer reached out and shared this with the with us. This happens on a daily basis throughout the week and it really does make a difference for people in our community. And and I'll stop there. And Sue, I don't know if you've got statistical data you want to share, but I just think I want to thank the commissioners because before you guys started dedicating this Not in Carroll funding and and gave us the opportunity as a a senior policy group to identify what we really thought needed to be done in Carroll County, we had no crisis services and there was nobody for for anybody to call other than the police or EMS. And police and EMS are not equipped to deal with this and that's really not their job. And and they get kind of tired and frustrated with it and 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 it doesn't help the situation. So this mobile crisis team has has been a huge help to our county and want to thank you guys for your previous support and encourage you to continue to support this effort. So Sue, do you have any data you want to share? We can't hear you.
I'm not going to say it.
Sue, we can't hear you. Okay. Well, I I Sue, if you could, just please send, uh, send the data that you have over to, uh, Roberta and she can share it with the commissioners and they'll have the information. All right, Celine, you can take it from there.
And so, um, with that, you know, um, the part of the funding that's been allocated, um, in the past to mobile crisis and what we're requesting again this year um, in the FY twenty-two budget would be to keep that a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars um, towards mobile crisis. And then the remaining hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, we would like to see reallocated to the after-school programming. So both of those will be flat funded, um, from the prior year. Um, one of the things with the the middle school, um, after-school programming that is really successful is that th- this targets and engages, um, identified at-risk youth in these programs so that we can have these prevention efforts to keep them from participating in at-risk behaviors. Uh, the Boys and Girls Club of Westminster, as I said, is the current service provider of the after-school programming and they've been able to really redesign their program to a club-on-the-go model during this COVID, um, year. They have also been able to, and I know we came and gave you an update earlier in the year because they have engaged a third middle school this year. So they started out, they started out in North Carroll and Northwest Middle Schools. And this past school year, the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, they added Sykesville Middle School as well. Uh, the after-school programs are really designed to engage youth in activities that not only build resiliency and focus on social and emotional wellness, but they also target anxiety. Um, and this year they decided to target, um, things related to COVID. So the anxiety related to COVID, remote learning and social isolation stress. Um, and they also tried to help students develop healthy coping skills to deal with all these issues that were surrounding COVID because this was was a very different year for everyone. Students also engaged in team building and leadership activities that increased their competence and their character, promoted self-esteem among the students. And since COVID prevented prevented the after-school programming to actually occur directly in the school with the students, the Boys and Girls Club, um, in addition to the Club on the Go activities, created an online platform that provided students with access to academic support, projects and other activities. So they they really wrapped around these students in a different way with the after-school programming this year than they had in years past. Um, so at Sykesville Middle School, um, the the program started in October of twenty twenty with great results. They had fifteen people enroll um, right away in October, and that's the max that they could have because of the COVID restrictions. Um, so they participated in Blackbird CrossFit. Uh, they also did a trip to Skyzone where they were able to bond with other students and staff. The North Carroll Middle School Program participated in a club-on-the-go model as well. They had their full enrollment of fifteen students participating in various programs. One of the highlights at North Carroll was that they participated in the North Carroll Running Club with members from North Carroll Middle School joining the Boys and Girls Club Run Team. So throughout twenty twenty, the team focused on building, uh, endurance and resiliency, achieving their personal best. Students actually participated in three different five K events, including the Baltimore Running Festival and the YMCA Turkey Trap. So the run team, they had practices held on a weekly, um, weekly basis that really focused on physical and mental health, breathing exercises, workouts, and really helping them to deal with anxiety and teaching them how to set personal goals. So, um, that was really great. Now Northwest Middle, um, during this time of COVID, that school presented with a much more, um, cautious community than the other two, making participation a little bit more challenging. And the Boys and Girls Club stepped up with some creative ideas. What they did, um, because they did not have the same participation in the planned experience trips that they did at the other two schools, they instead decided to partner with New Windsor State Bank to do some meal on the go, um, two meal drives in Pawnee Town. And during that time, they they were able to feed thirty club families with those meal drives. And during the time where the people were coming to pick up the food, they were able to engage engage them and encourage them to start participating in their activities and getting the students engaged. And that was successful. Um, they were also able to coordinate transportation to arrange to get students even into the Westminster Club to do virtual programming there. Um, and also computer and internet access there was a bigger issue than they had, um, anticipated. So they were able to get them Chromebooks funded by Canor Break and some also also get them Comcast Internet Essentials um, free of charge, uh, for remote learning and online programs. Um, so really they had some great success there and they're continuing, um, and engaging them in the Westminster Strength and Conditioning Gym, um, providing transportation to have a program with them. Um, and they are going to add more experience trips as they have participation, as they're growing that engagement in the experience trips, uh, at that school. So it it's really important, the work that they're doing, to really keep these kids connected during this time. And I really think that, um, this priority group, especially middle school youth, this is, this is the the a great, um, program to to keep them from not engaging in these at-risk behaviors and keeping them away from opioid use and other other, uh, drug use that would take them down the road, the wrong path. So.
So was this for informational update?
This is really just an informational update because you you aren't able to approve the funding for continuation at this time because it's actually in the the recommended FY twenty-two budget.
I was going to say, it's already budgeted. So this was just informational. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Steckel, I want to thank you for incorporating the mental health component into this because we're all very well aware that usually that's the conduit that draws people into addiction. So by addressing the mental health, I think you're getting right out in front of this to prevent the addiction in the future. Thank you.
Okay, any other, uh, Thomas questions? Very good briefing. Uh, appreciate the, uh, all the information in preparation for, uh, the upcoming budget discussions. So and Ed, just, uh,
We'll get the, uh, we'll we'll get that data to you through Roberta uh, related to prices. Thanks.
Just just let you know, um, because since I see Celine also on, she, uh, shared with us yesterday in cabinet that, um, seventy are being vaccinated over at Access Carroll, correct? Uh, tomorrow?
Yeah, that's, uh, that that's actually, that'll be their second doses, Commissioner. And, uh, we had, uh, we had vaccinated, uh, obviously it's four weeks later. Uh, four weeks ago, we had, uh, we'd come over and and actually in partnership with Access Carroll, I had a couple of our staff come over with vaccine and and whatnot and and vaccinated some of the clients there that in the older age categories. And we're also looking at partnering partnering with them again to reach their medically fragile people who will be eligible in phase two B. And I think we're going to schedule another clinic there as well. So we've been trying to make sure that any place we can, uh, reach out to people. Uh, I I love Access Carroll. It's been a great partnership between us, the county, the hospital and and the, uh, organization itself and and, uh, it's a good place for us to reach some really highly at-risk people. So yes, uh, we'll we'll be back there for second doses tomorrow and we're looking to schedule something to to try to reach the other people who didn't meet the age category, but will meet the underlying health conditions issues.
Great. Again, just a, another great message of looking out for the entire community. So thanks. Okay, let's move on to FY twenty-one Emergency Rental Assistance Program Award. Ms. Corey, Ms. Celine and Ms. Danielle may or may not show up.
Danielle will not be here today. She's actually out today, but I, um, I'm Celine Steckel, the Director of Citizen Services, joined with um, Corey Hardinger, our Grants Analyst with Management and Budget. Um, and we are here, Commissioners, to seek approval for the submission of the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, otherwise known as ERAP um, and the application, and then also to accept the award as well as authorize the addition of two contractual full-time positions, one full-time fiscal position and an additional housing stability coordinator. We have been anticipating the release of of these allocations, uh, from, uh, funding from the US Department of Treasury, who has provided the funding to the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development um, to distribute to the local jurisdictions. And I know you've heard us talk about this in in previous sessions, um, that it was coming and it's here. Uh, Carroll County's allocation of the Emergency Rental Assistance Program Fund is four million, two hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars, which includes three hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred, two hundred and forty, eight hundred and forty-two thousand dollars for housing, eight hundred and forty-two dollars for housing stability services and administration of the project. I'm just trying to get us more money, really. Um, the funds are available through September of twenty twenty-two. This funding can be re-used to resolve rental arrears, utility arrears, prospective rental payment and housing stability assistance for residents of Carroll County. The eligibility requirements for this funding are much less restrictive than some of the other, um, eviction prevention money that we've received in the past. Um, this allows us to support people who receive up to eighty percent of the area median income, still ensuring that there's a prioritization for those that are fifty percent or below AMI as well as those in the census tracts in the top twenty-five percent for eviction risk. But what that, the the bottom line to that is, we can help people that have higher incomes that are, that we know are going to have a a need for eviction prevention assistance. So th- this funding will allow us to reach more and different people than we have reached in the past with our assistance. This funding also differs in the fact that in the past, um, that in the past, it had to be a tenant that applied for this funding. But now with this application process, both landlords and tenants can make application for the funding. We plan to submit, um, to, we plan to have, uh, some sub-brants, um, sub-grant the administrative funding to our community partners, specifically HSP, who has really served as the gatekeeper for all eviction prevention programs. Um, so that we have one, a one-stop shop where people can contact them. They can process applications, vet eligibility, um, and then submit approved applicant applicants to our department for review and processing and then payment of the assistance. The funding is very timely because the courts have moved into their phase four of their COVID recovery plan as of March fifteenth, which allows them to start hearing the eviction cases. Um, the CDC eviction moratorium is also slated to lift on March thirty-first. We have been in contact with Carroll County's District Court and they have let us know that they will begin hearing eviction cases on April the twelfth. And they have three hundred and thirty-eight cases scheduled on the docket to be heard from April twelfth till May tenth, which is a large number, not not large when you're hearing other jurisdictions, but large for us. Um, so to be proactive, we've partnered with the administrative judge, Judge Brown, at the District Court and her staff. And we receive, um, they're going to provide us with copies of the docket to outreach to those tenants and landlords that are on the list to ensure that the folks are aware of this assistance that's available. Our goal is to run eviction proceedings, keeping Carroll County citizens, um, housed while making landlords whole as well. So it's on both sides. Um, we've also been offered space within the courthouse on the days that they hear the eviction cases um, so that we can have a housing stability coordinator on site to work with those folks that did not respond to our outreach prior to going to court. And I do want to say that this is an exciting win for Carroll County because this does not exist. This collaboration does not exist in in many jurisdictions. So um, we are excited that that Judge Brown and her staff are willing to work with us and with HSP. It's a collaborative effort to make this happen. Um, as the Department of Citizen Services continues to receive much-needed state and federal funding to support the citizens of Carroll County as we recover from the COVID pandemic, we are mindful, um, that the administrative and fiscal oversight that this funding requires. So to to put things into perspective, um, our department, not including aging and disabilities funding, pre-COVID, would administer on average about eight point one million dollars of funding in a year to, which included our Housing Choice voucher program, Homeless Solutions program, um, the CBBG Capital Projects, Local Management Board, and then the Continuum of Care Grants. Since the start of the pandemic, we have received an additional seven point two million dollars, bringing our total to fifteen point three million dollars to our department alone, requiring administrative monitoring and fiscal oversight of all of that funding. So I just wanted to point out to you, when we talk about funding available, now we're sub-granting some of those funds, but we still have to monitor um, and provide fiscal oversight for all of that funding. So I just wanted to make sure that you folks were aware of how much funding has been coming through, uh, in total this year. Um, and we do know there will be additional funding coming in the form of ERAP round two. So another, um, and this is all exciting. I'm not complaining. I think this is great. Uh, but when we come to you and say we're, we're requesting, and this will be, we're requesting our third housing stability coordinator. Um, and then also a full-time fiscal, uh, position. This this is why, and they're contractual. Um, and and, um, but we need these positions in order to make sure that we can provide this oversight and everything, um, is accounted for. So, um, I know that was a lot of information. I wrapped a lot of things in there, but I think it was very timely and um, if you have any questions, Corey and I will be happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I just want to state that your office being proactive is going to be a tremendous help and asset to the court system. Because I'm sure they're looking at a wave potentially coming at them from the economic impact of COVID. This is going to be a big help. With that said, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the submission of the Emergency Rental Assistance Program application and accept the award as well as authorize the additional addition of two contractual full- as well as authorize additional, addition of two contractual full-time positions.
So, okay, I got a motion and I got a second on the floor. Any further comments, discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Okay, five oh.
Thank you very much.
I think Celine, you're staying on and be joined by Bobby and Gina, maybe, to talk about the 2021 Comprehensive Case Management and Supports Planning Services for Medicaid Long-Term Services and Supports Solicitation.
You did a great job. Thank you. As you said, I'm, I'm joined here with Gina Valentine, our Bureau Chief of Aging and Disabilities, and then Bobby Lawrence, who is our Aging and Disabilities Services Supervisor. And we're here before you to seek approval for the, the Comprehensive Case Management and Supports Planning Solicitation. We had come before you a few months ago because the Maryland Department of Health had offered an extension of last year's grant and solicitation. They hadn't been able to complete the application to, to send out to folks to reapply for this year's funding. Now they have completed that and we are back before you today with the formal application and request for submission and approval of, of the funding for the next year. So I'm going to turn it over to Gina to explain a little bit about the solicitation and the services provided through this. And I will pass it to Gina.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you, Celine. The focus of this program is to provide case management services to assist program participants with securing services, which enable them to move out of an institution such as a nursing home or a state hospital to, and then to remain safely in their homes and avoid long-term care placements. As, as Celine said, this is an extension for the rest of the year, which will be effective April first, 2021, and goes through December thirty-first, 2021. The program operates on a fee-for-service model. Instead of for the, excuse me, the budget for this time period is estimated revenue for April first through twenty, twenty twenty-one, through December thirty-first, 2021 is a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. The county contribution, which is included in our fiscal year 2021 budget, is twenty thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars for a total of two hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. So I'm going to pass it over to Bobby to provide some additional information about the program and the services that are offered to clients who are in the program.
Thank you. Good afternoon. The Home and Community-Based Services Programs provide the following services to qualifying individuals, such as personal care, home-delivered meals, life emergency response systems, sometimes environmental adaptations and environmental assistance with assessments, assistive technology and nurse monitoring. These are Medicaid-funded programs where individuals must meet financial and medical requirements to qualify for such programs. The program continues to operate on the fee-for-service model. So staff members are able to bill for allowable client-related activities such as arranging, modifying services, phone calls, emails, meetings with clients, documentation. Staff are unable to bill for tasks related to travel and training. Currently, we have four staff, three full-time and one part-time contractual. And a position has been posted for another part-time contractual position. Each year, approximately one hundred and seventy-five clients are served in the program. While the Bureau of Aging and Disabilities has a capacity of one hundred and forty-eight clients, very typically additional clients above this cap have been accepted due to wait lists and a lot of the other support planning agencies being at capacity, which is often quite common. Right now, we're serving one hundred and fifty clients in the program, but that's probably due to increase and fluctuate. So I know that staff is, is very busy. Right now, nursing homes seem to be on an upkeep with trying to provide services and try to transition individuals out of facilities whenever it's possible and appropriate. So I think that sums it up. Do you have any additional questions about services in these programs?
Okay, are there any questions, comments on this? Hear none. Do I have a motion?
I move the Board of Commissioners approve the 2021 Comprehensive Care Management and Supports Planning Solicitation and Acceptance of the Funding.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. We're moving slow. All second. Okay. Oh, okay, I apologize. We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hear none. All in favor? Commissioner Wentz? Yep, okay, thank you. Five oh. And just a side note. Gina, thanks again for the opportunity to speak at the seat. I thoroughly enjoyed it yesterday. So thanks.
You're very welcome and thank you for presenting. I think they definitely enjoyed your presentation. Thank you.
I wouldn't go that far.
Ah, come on now. Okay, thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Let's move on to legislative update with Mr. Fowler.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Afternoon.
So we got about two and a half weeks left in this session. Plenty, plenty of time for things to happen. So no time for complacency. So crossover was this Monday, the twenty-second. But because we're in this unusual situation, cer- certain rules have been waived and there are still bills coming out of committees. So in other words, there are still House bills coming out of House committees to the House floor and, and the same in the Senate. So not, not completely done with, with the crossover in the, in the typical sense. One thing they've, they have, one rule I say they have established is that when there's a cross-file bill that comes from the other chamber that is essentially in the same format that, that the bill exists in that committee, they're not going to hold a hearing. They haven't really defined specifically what significantly different means, but I think out of, out of the fact of time is driving this, that they're, they're not going to hold hearings on bills that they really don't have to, that, that essentially are covered in the cross-file. And in some cases, on these cross-file bills, one chamber or one committee really takes the lead and the other committee will wait until that bill passes and then work on it in that, in that form. So that, that also creates some efficiencies. The, the Governor's Budget did pass today on the Senate floor unanimously. Interestingly, Senator Edwards, who is the ranking minority leader, was highly complimentary of the, of, of the committee chair in involving and taking into consideration the concerns of the Republicans on the committee. So I, I thought that was interesting. Our concerns with the Burfa bill have been addressed. We talked about the ESTAT, the ESTAT cost shift being amended out and the issue of erroneous convictions being amended out. And the issue regarding MOE and the, the temporary dip in enrollment was addressed through the Blueprint Bill, which we'll talk about a little later. However, the COVID Workman's Comp Bills are still in committee. They're still being worked on in work sessions. So my warning about complacency really applies here. We shouldn't take anything away from the fact that they haven't moved yet. Remember I said that there are still bills coming out of committee? There could still be something coming out of this committee on that. The fact that there are so many bills leads me to believe that something is, is likely to make its way through. The Essential Workers Protection Act, remember that's the bill that, that defines essential workers and then places a lot of, I guess, benefits, if you will, there. That's another one that's still in committee. They were actually in work session today on that. It's been heavily discussed, been heavily amended. Among the amendments, I suppose you could say in our favor are that it eliminates the ability of an employee to refuse work and the supplemental hazard pay condition has been eliminated in that. So we're, we're keeping a close eye to see what actually does come out of committee there. One troublesome bill has passed. Right now, current law says that if a project is funded by fifty percent or more of state funds or the total is, is five hundred thousand in state funds, then you pay prevailing wage. That threshold is being lowered to twenty-five percent of funding and two hundred and fifty thousand of state funding. So prevailing wage expands. The Climate Solutions Now Act, we talked in, in detail about that one. Heavily amended in the Senate, it did pass. It is scheduled for its first hearing in Environment and Transportation next week. That's one of those ones, I believe, that they let Senator Pinsky, whose bill it is, take the lead in his committee on working through that and they will work with what the Senator sends to them. So on the education for the Blueprint Bill, last session, we talked Kerwin, Kerwin, Kerwin. Now you hear Blueprint. So Kerwin is, is in the past. Now, whenever we talk about that bill and that program, it's the Blueprint for Maryland's future. So that was really introduced to make corrections based on the Governor's veto. So timelines change. Again, that MOE fix is in there. One amendment was added to the bill to study the county's ability to meet its funding obligations, which suggests that they will look at taxing capacity for counties that, that perhaps are funding at a lower level than others or, or the state is, is committing a majority of, of funding to them. Again, this one was, a lot of amendments put on there. None of them really affecting cost or obligation, funding obligations, more in how the program would be carried out. It did pass out of committee this morning and it was on the Senate floor. And yes, it did pass the Senate floor in second reader. So in the next coming days, and I wouldn't be surprised if it goes on the floor tomorrow for final passage. One of the good bills we got was the fully, full restoration of Cade funding. That was passed in the Senate, Budget and Tax took the lead on that. And of course, when we talked about the budget, we talked about the improvement in, in the outlook, combination of, of federal funds and, and, and increased revenues. So some, some comfort there. The Community College Collective Bargaining, we talked about last week. It, it authorizes collective bargaining in the community colleges. There are four bargaining units that are approved. Two are for the faculty for part-time and, and full-time, and then two others eligible units. The date, the effective date for Carroll Community College is September first of 2023. Both bills are out of their committee. There was an amendment to allow the county to weigh in on the funding request. And I, I want to redo the language of the bill so it's, it's clear. So a request for funds necessary to implement an agreement shall be submitted by the public employer in a timely fashion for consideration in the budget process of the county. And then not later than twenty days after final budget action by the governing body of accounting. If a request for funds necessary to implement an agreement is reduced, modified or rejected by the governing body, either party to the agreement may reopen the agreement. So you do have some ability to address what may be some, an additional request for funding. And they will have to go back to the tape on that. Elections, so I gave you a, a pretty detailed account of the election bills that were impactful. A few changes on those, House Bill seven forty-five, the early voting centers, it did pass the House. That's now over in the Senate for consideration. House Bill seven fifty-nine, which is the post-tabulation, post-election tabulation audits, has passed the House and, and is in the Senate Committee. House Bill ten forty-seven, the Mail-In Voting Enhancement Act, that has passed the House and been referred to committee in the Senate. And then the House Bill ten forty-eight and Senate Bill six eighty-three, the Permanent Absentee Ballot List. That passed the House with amendments. The Senate version is amended and, excuse me, the Senate version has been amended to send absent ballot, absent ballots to all registered voters. That's just going to be a significant cost involved there and that bill is still in Senate Committee. Another bill I didn't talk about was the Value My Vote Act. And that, that requires the Board to engage the detention centers to provide instruction to inmates and those who have been released on their right to vote. Establish, establishes ballot drop boxes at the detention centers. That's been passed by the House and, and referred to the Senate Committee as well. Public Safety and Health, so yesterday, Senate President Ferguson asked the, the Chair of Judicial Proceedings in the Senate to make his single focus now the passage of the Reform, Police Reform Bill package. So you remember the, where we are with that is the Senate passed a package of nine bills. That is in the, in the House now. And House Judiciary Committee is actually going to hear those tomorrow. The, the omnibus bill, the omnibus House bill that Speaker put forward, it sounds like the, the Chair of the Senate Committee heard his president loud and clear because at noon, a work session was scheduled, which is actually underway now as we speak. Lot of, a lot of thing, a lot of differences in those two packages that need to be worked out. Little time left. The President, Senate President, has suggested that there may be some bills that don't pass. But a lot of, I think, reputations and possibly political careers are on the line with this one. So, so we're going to see a lot of attention in, in the next two weeks on that one. And, and you'll remember, the House package has the two situations there that are problematic for us. One is it, with the Administrative Charging Committee, it puts you ostensibly, potentially in a position to oversee the work of the sheriff. The other is the Administrative Charging Committee has to be stood up for an incident that occurs in the municipalities. So Mago made clear those were some issues that need to be addressed in the bill. They were not addressed in the House Committee. So Mago is going to continue their press on that and some other issues. And we'll see, we'll see if, if they can work that out. But that's going to be a problem for, for counties like, like ours. I mentioned to you last week that I had on good word that no SRO bills would move. And apparently that word was not as good as I thought. But it's also not as bad as, as, as that. So House Bill five twenty-two was one of the SRO bills that has been amended. And, and I think it's probably a, a, a pretty good compromise between what the advocates were looking for and what the people that support the programs want to keep. So it, first and foremost, it does keep the funding in place for the program. It, it puts some conditions around how the SRO will operate. They've obviously got to keep a clean disciplinary record. They can't have any, any excessive force claims against them. One change is the, the police agency and the school system must jointly agree how the SROs are going to be assigned. But everything I've heard, there's a lot of cooperation there already and that shouldn't be much of a problem. You, you'll remember that enforcement of discipline, of typical discipline problems in some of the larger, more urbanized counties were one of the drivers on this. And, and so. larger, more urbanized counties were one of the drivers on this, and and so the ability to enforce relatively minor discipline issues in the school is kind of narrowly defined. They essentially have to be a a problem that that will, you know, escalate into bottling harm or some other security incident. So this will be the only bill that that will move, as I say, I think this kind of captures most of what both sides of the the issue had wanted to see. One of the bills that that we're we're happy to see is House Bill eleven twenty-three and Senate Bill five sixty-three, the local health department funding. So these, this bill and and the one after it, I I want to seek your concurrence on reaching out to our delegation members who are on the respective committees for these bills. Mago has asked all of the counties to reach out to their delegation members to let them know these are important bills. So I want to seek your concurrence on that as well. The the first is the the local health department funding, it is a Mago initiative. It was voted on by the Mago Legislative Committee. It's passed the Senate, and it's been referred to appropriations where we have Delegate Kittleman on that and and Delegate Navatney, who are District Four, excuse me, District Nine. So they have a portion of of Carroll. And also Senate Bill six ninety, which is inspections of records from body cameras. So this seeks to sort of restrict to the degree possible disclosure of body camera footage. It will protect victims from online shaming. It does maintain public access to to reasonable footage, but it would return, it would deter phishing expeditions. Give me all of the camera footage from the past month on all your officers, that sort of thing. So so Delegate Cox of District Four is is on that committee, and so I would ask your concurrence on those two bills to let me reach out to them on your behalf to ask for them to vote favorable on these bills.
Okay, Mike, thanks, and we talked a little bit about this last night, knowing that Commissioner Wanta, Commissioner Frazier already recommended support within Mago for the Board of Commissioners to go forward. You know, it was my recommendation that we bring this up to get full concurrence from the Board of Commissioners to write these letters to the delegation. Is that a good to go, thumbs up in doing it? I don't know if we need a motion for that or just a concurrence? You good? Okay, I think we got a full concurrence from the board at this point.
Great, yeah, thank you. I think the timing was was such that we we don't lose anything here, so that's good, thank you. So House Bill nine eighty-nine and Senate Bill seven fourteen, this was Delegate Krebs' bill. This increases the size of the nine-one-one board. It it increases some training to our nine-one-one call-takers, and it also gives, it it deals with the enforcement of Carrie's Law, which is each telephone must be able to directly call nine-one-one. The bill, Carrie's Law, was a federal bill that was driven by the fact that there was a domestic incident in a hotel room, and the child tried to call nine-one-one but didn't realize that they had to dial nine to get out of there. So this federal bill now requires each individual telephone to do that, so this was a good one to get passed. Another nine-one-one related bill was part of, actually, nine-one-one is part of it, but it it elevates MEMA, the Maryland Emergency Management Agency, to a cabinet-level department. And it also transfers the nine-one-one board into the new department. Both of these bills have passed, and they've been referred to the opposite committee, so that's a good sign, and we'll probably see that one go through. Commissioner Frazier mentioned the the meeting yesterday, the Legislative Committee meeting yesterday, and one bill that I did not include in your outline, but I just wanted to mention because I saw Mr. Singer on here, was House Bill thirteen eighty and Senate Bill nine fifty-seven. This is a bill that would establish a a penalty for making a threat against a public health official. Current law, you are protected as elected officials against threats, but health department officials are not. This is one of those bills that is still in the Rules Committee, so whether we see it or not, not sure, but I I wanted you to know that one was was in play, and both those bills were introduced by Frederick County members, Senator Young and Delegate Young from Frederick County. On the public work side, the the highway user revenues, the the House version hasn't moved, but the the Senate bill will, so I think we'll see we'll see that one go through as well, which is good because it removes the two thousand and twenty-five sunset. So while it doesn't fully restore, it does remove the sunset that would drop us back down to a to a much lower number. We talked about a a bill that that Baltimore County introduced to include Carroll in a group of counties that would look at a regional waste disposal solution, if you will. So Ha- House Bill eight oh seven has been amended to create a task force on recycling policy and recycling and waste systems in Maryland, so it was it was originally narrowly intended to update, to actually take action to update the Maryland Recycling Act, but it has been significantly amended to now create a task force to review the status of solid waste and recycling in the state. It does give greater local representation. There are four representatives of the four largest counties. There are four representatives of the smaller counties by geographic area. We talked about the Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority, they are represented on the bill. It it, they will recommend how to update the act and look at regional solutions to and and possible facility sites, potential for reuse of abandoned sites within the state, the ability for cost sharing and developing service networks, and advancing principles of zero waste. Now, I think conspicuously absent is a a prohibition in the Baltimore County Bill on way on considering waste to energy. So so I think this one, if we're going to look at this in in a comprehensive way, this is probably the best way to do it statewide, but also consider regional cooperation, and also to have a much larger representation on local government part. So by doing that, I think we can say the Baltimore County Bill will now go away. And then the lastly, the the Plastic Bag Reduction Act that we talked about has passed the House, it's now over in the in the Senate Committee, where the the Chair of the Committee is is very sympathetic to this, and we'll, we will see that one go through as well. And so the last ones I have for you go to cybersecurity. House Bill thirty-eight and Senate Bill forty-nine, they have both passed, they developed guidance on cybersecurity strategies for local governments and school systems. There's no mandate there, and again, they they both both passed, and they've been assigned in the opposite committee, so we'll we'll see that one come through at the end. And then lastly, House Bill eight seventy-nine and Senate Bill sixty-nine. Senator Hester sponsored sponsored this Senate version. It creates a cybersecurity and coordination operations office in, I guess, what will now be the Maryland Department of Emergency Management. It it establishes regional coordinators, it's tended to bring more coordination to planning and developing best practices. I think that Mark Ripper did testify on this, and the the IT folks across the state are in support of it. Both bills have passed, and I think we'll see these this go through as well. And and another note that the bond bills, which you really haven't talked about because they are typically not an issue, they they both have passed, so we are fine on that. So I guess my my final thoughts again are things really start to accelerate now. I know you're in you're in budget, but I'll be back to you next week, and hopefully I can have some more good news. But no predictions because they usually don't turn out anyway.
Okay, thanks, Mike, a lot of information in a relative relatively short amount of time. Any comments, questions for Mike moving on? I personally, I appreciate that cybersecurity coordination bill that's moving forward, I think there's a lot of lessons learned when it comes to cybersecurity and protecting our networks, so I I like that one, and I appreciate, I was talking to Mr. Ripper about that as well, so good stuff. Okay, I think we're good for now, Mike, thank you very much, let's move on to Fire EMS. Mr. McCoy.
Afternoon, Commissioners, joining you again for a weekly update on a new topic, and Chris, if I can have the screen. Okay, for the sake of time, we're going to skip the first four slides like we usually do. Today's topic falls under the hiring milestone. Under, we're going to discuss part-time employees for volunteer stations, as well as the county fire and EMS department. And what I'm looking for today is for the Commissioners to provide direction on hiring of county part-time employees. And when I talk about part-time employees for the county government, they would actually, according to HR, fall under the contractual employees, less than twenty hours per week. And I'm looking for further guidance from them on that as well, as we continue these discussions. So currently, all stations, with the exception of Harney, have employees to assist them with service delivery. The best count I've gotten, there are one hundred and fifteen full-time station employees, and there are approximately one hundred and fifty-five part-time employees across the county. Of the one hundred and fifty-five part-time employees, fifty-one are ALS certified, ninety-six are BLS certified. Of the one hundred and fifty-five, twelve work at two different stations, and of the one fifty-five, four work at three different stations. Many part-time employees are current members of neighboring jurisdictions and will not be in a position to apply with Carroll County. As the county places personnel in stations, part-time employees may offer their assistance to other stations in the county, that was one of the concerns. As we move into Westminster, if there are any part-timers there that will not apply for their position, they would be able to look down the approved schedule of hiring and offer their services down that line. If the Commissioners choose that five-year planning, like I said, the the opportunities and hopefully the pool will continue to be able to provide that service. Looking at part-time employees also from another angle, county fire and EMS personnel at this time will be permitted to work for volunteer stations as part-time employees to further enhance that pool of available personnel. And county fire EMS personnel will also be permitted to volunteer in the county on their days off under specific requirements to ensure compliance with any FLSA requirements. Now, when we, the county may also look to employ part-time fire EMS employees. I'm trying to list advantages and disadvantages. And right now, the advantages, it would provide operational flexibility. Those personnel can be used to fill periods of leave, or could be utilized for peak period ambulance, to be placed and serviced in various areas as we gain at assets. They were able to hire them at a lower hourly rate with no fringe benefits included. Overtime reduction during leave period is is the potential, depending on how they are utilized. And it also allows for a preview of potential new hires. I did have part-timers in one force and not in the other, the one force I did have the part-timers, a lot of our full-time hires were our part-time employees that we were able to train and pretty much get a preview beforehand. The disadvantages include part-timers are subject to a bidding war, many have full-time jobs and a part-time job or two, and will go where they can make the most money, understandably. There's no accountability of hours, which is a safety concern. Many places' employments have consecutive hour limits. And when we schedule part-time employees, we're not, we're, we are not aware in most cases, how many hours they have been working over the work week. Based upon the potential number of jobs and hours worked, fatigue would definitely then become a factor, which would also be a liability, depending on what position they they operated in. There is a potential lack of dedication or loyalty, you know, all people vary, and with part-time employees, their loyalty will always be with their with their full-time position. And their dedication is also driven by who will pay the most. We, I have seen situations where employees are scheduled to work in with less than two hours. They have the opportunity to go to their department and make overtime double the money than what we can pay, that's always the the possibility. Dependability, lack of continuity is also a potential. When you insert a part-time employee with a team of personnel who work together every shift, the bidding war that we mentioned previously could also affect their dependability. And just basic lack of continuity, if you have an employee that does not work many part-time hours, and like I said, you insert them with a crew. There there's a lot of, I guess, uncertainty as far as the the limits of that employee and the capability of the team. So in summary, the first two aspects of part-time employees require no action on your part. The hiring schedule will permit the use of station full and part-time employees for at least five years. The permitting of county fire EMS personnel to work part-time for the stations and volunteer also will assist with strengthening the available resources. Last, while need direction, is if the Commissioners decide to hire part-time fire EMS employees, I would recommend that we maintain a small a small pool commencing with the placement of personnel at Station Three. That is the first station I have been in negotiations and discussions with their attorney and their president along with Tim Burke on developing the MOU since Station Three will be the first station. I do know they have three employees that are well-respected within the career ranks that will not apply for this position, so that's a very good start to potentially be able to offer those employees positions to backfill any lead potential at Station Three. The other recommendations, the requirements of part-time employees should match the career personnel as best as possible. And one one responsibility I'll have is that the part-time employee would be subject to the daily mandates of the director. As a department expands, obviously, we're going to want our personnel in the community, training, doing inspections, public relations, and the people that will be functioning in part-time role will be expected to be in a condition to to operate as part of that crew. So I'll answer any questions you possibly may have on part-time employees.
Okay, tha- thanks, Bob, can you do me a favor, go back to that disadvantaged slide?
Yes, sir.
Forward.
Passed it. There we go.
Okay. I just want to stick on this for just a minute because it pretty much offends me. It offends me as a, you know, as a leader, and lack of dedication or loyalty to the county because they are part-time. That's pretty difficult for me to swallow, one, because the five Commissioners are part-time Commissioners, and I think all five of us One, because the five commissioners are part-time commissioners and I think all five of us are very dedicated to this community. And if it's doubted, then, you know, we have a, a limit and we get voted in and out. So it goes from the, all the way to the top of this county in leadership down to those that I respect. I don't want to say the most, but very close, and that's our fire and EMS and those that run forward and not backwards. And I, I don't know, I, I, I have a really tough time now. I'm not as familiar with the bidding war piece of this, but no accountability of hours worked. I mean, that's, again, that's leadership. That's having the conversation with, with the workforce. Employee fatigue and liability, that's leadership and that's looking out for each other, whether they're fatigued and lack of dedication is ju, that, that really, that's wrong. Our volunteers, our part-timers, those that are serving in those houses. And again, I don't know all of them, but I've been around enough folks in, in the roles that I've had that that becomes very, very offensive. Dependability and lack of continuity, I understand the lack of continuity potentially, but every one of us is replaceable. And every one of us being replaceable, you know, the intent is to hire and bring on somebody as qualified as the last one. And alls we can do is leave it a little bit better than when, when we brought it on or when we entered. So there is always going to be a concern of lack of continuity as those that retire, as those that leave, as it's happening now. As we've had some very significant seniors leave our workforce. I'm not as concerned with lack of continuity because the legacy that they left behind is an incredible team to pick it up. And dependability, I, I don't buy it. That's culture. And if we think that a part-timer or volunteer is less dependable just because they're part-time and volunteer, that, that is, again, frustrating to me. One is a leader, but also as I, what I believe, a community and a culture within our community that has done so well for so long. I understand there's conflicts between, you know, part-times and full-times and volunteers, all that kind of stuff. But these should not be the arguments that we're looking at on whether we should have part-time or, or full-time. I, and I'll just leave it, I don't want to be so parochial, but I didn't think I would get so twisted until I saw this slide. I was like, wow, I mean, I'm, that's pretty offensive to me, so.
And Commissioner, just to respond, it was not meant to be offensive or personal towards anyone in Carroll County. When I was putting together this program, I researched part-time employ, employees in fire departments. I came upon a study where chiefs from across the country were asked for the advantages and disadvantages. And what I wanted to do was provide examples of what was provided within that study. Like I said, I've had part-timers in one department and not in the other. But the advantages and disadvantages I showed you was a sampling of the study that I reviewed.
Oh, no, I understand and it's definitely, I'm, I'm not saying you.
Absolutely.
And as, like you said, you compiled it from, oh, elsewhere. And I've seen things like this. I'm just saying from experiences. You know, we have an amazing community and culture that depends on part-time and volunteers from our fire department, but from a lot of the things that we do and serve. So I just, i- if, if a disadvantage had to do with a specific HR issue or a disadvantage had to do with, you know, growing a leadership role or developing a team, then that'd be one thing, but these are very, just culture, community and leadership issues that I wasn't expecting. So just throwing it out there.
As we move forward in this, independent fire department can still hire anybody they want, right?
That's, as we move forward with placing personnel in stations such as FY22, we will do Westminster and Sykesville. The remaining 13 stations will still be funded to hire all the personnel that they, they require. That's correct.
Okay, so we only have control over the people we put in, not the, anything else in the fire department.
That's correct.
Anyone that's working part-time now for any of the stations, let's say Westminster, since that's the first one that we're looking to, to put our people in, I guess you could say. If they're working part-time there and they're not needed there, they can certainly go to one of the other stations. It's later, it's more down the list and work part-time. It's not, they're not being eliminated. They could go to a different station if they were not needed at the Westminster station or the Sykesville station when that comes up. So there's, there's plenty of opportunity for them to go somewhere else and work at those particular stations. And it's going to be, what, five years before we, if things work out the way we're looking at them and so forth, before we get to all of our stations. So the part-time employees, and even after that, there may still be a need for some part-time. I, I don't know, but there might be a need for some, some, you know, a couple of part-times here and there.
Are, are there any restrictions to a person, you know, we hire a full-time EMS person? Is, is there any restriction that they work in another department in the county, part-time?
As far as another department within county government, I'm not aware of. This was a question that I had for HR. My position was that if a county fire EMS employee operated for, or still worked part-time for one of the independent stations during this transition, that would be a, a separate corporation. But as far as working within the county government in another, I, I haven't heard of that.
Well, what about even if they work, okay, they're full-time EMS here, but they want to work as an engineer or part-time at the station, another station, or even when it's pretty much, if the station pays them part-time, there's no, shouldn't be any conflict, should there?
No, sir. Not if we have, not if we have not assigned personnel there yet. Now, I, that's one, that's one issue that I, I wanted to be able to keep the workforce plentiful as far as the available personnel.
Is there any max number of hours that a firefighter or EMS can work per week? I, I would think, as a thing that goes, you work a certain amount of times and, and then your productivity goes down or you're not seeing things the way they should be seen. I don't know if there's a standard in, in this industry with the fire and EMS or not. If you work, and I don't, you know, 80, 90, whatever, I have no idea. Past that, it's not recommended and mostly for safety reasons. Is there anything like that?
Well, Commissioner Ross seems correct. I mean, it's all a management issue, you know, being aware of, of the employees and their hours. I've seen it vary across departments, some, especially with a 24-hour work schedule. You start looking at whether 32 consecutive hours, I've seen 36 or 40. You also have to take into account what their position is. Are they pushing narcotics, you know, drugs during, as a paramedic? Are they in the busiest houses in the county or, or is it a slow house? But after 40 years in the fire service, I'll also say you just don't get the rest in the fire station that you do at your house and being away from the profession. So there's different, there's different factors that we would have to look at, but I would be looking more at a consecutive hour rule. So one of the advantages I, I read up on and, and like I said, I've, I've been, I've dealt with is if you hired, if you have a part-time employee and they're reporting to work, it's just making sure that we have rules in place for those employees to say you, you needed to at least have eight hours of rest prior to reporting to the county over a consecutive number of hours. So it's purely a management issue that we would have to stay on top of.
You know, again, the, the only, and I think last comment I hope to make on this is back when I enlisted in the army in the early 80s, National Guard and Reserves were considered part-time weekend warriors. And it was a very different culture back then, very different. Fast forward to 20, 2000, 2005 and, and forward, we were dependent on our National Guard and Reserves to do in the mission and working side-by-side. Fast forward all the way to now, they are an integral part. And I would not think of anybody wearing a uniform as part-time or, or weekend warrior, you know, as far as National Guard Reserve. I don't know if that equates to this, you know, side-by-side, but dedication of a, of anybody wearing a uniform, whether it's part-time or full-time, I, I cannot believe that somebody putting a uniform on would be less dedicated to the, the role and the mission. And that, that's what I think really kind of twisted me a little bit, so, and I'll just leave it at that.
It's understandable.
Any other thoughts, Commissioner Wance? You want to chime in on this one?
I didn't know if I'd get a chance. I'll just, I'll, I'll be brief and just say, I, I think with the difficulties and challenges that we're seeing of anyone who wants to serve in public safety positions these days, we should let the door open to whatever it is, whether it's full-time or part-time. If you've got the right parameters in place, I, I, I just, we should not be shutting the door on anyone.
Well, I have to say, I don't, I certainly don't want to shut the door on anybody, but I think we should look for as many full-time employees as we can and part-time would be used to, to fill, fill the gaps when, when and where necessary. I think that's, I would think that would be the intent, to try to get as many full-time as we can. And if you can't, then you can't. There's only so many people out there and and there's other, you know, other factors and all that involved. But I just would like to, I think we're looking for full-time employees. Part-time is, is like a, to a backfill. I'm not saying anything about dedication or dependability, anything of that sort because I do believe that for a while, and I don't know how long, we're going to need some part-time employees. It's not going to be, okay, we hired all these full-time employees, we're great. I don't think it's going to go that, that smooth or that well. I think that the part-time is what we need it, but I, I think our intention is to go to full-time employees as much as possible. Would that be your intention, Director McCoy?
That's correct. Like I said, I, I, I think there's definitely opportunities for everyone and that will definitely be an assistance to the part-time option there.
We are definitely a combination.
Yeah.
Department coming together and we're going to need all aspects to help us. How that's put together, I think our director needs to be able to do that what's best for the county and for the independent fire stations. Good luck with that one. But I, I, I do think we need to make this, you know, we have a lot of volunteers out there and been there for years and they are so dedicated, it's unbelievable. They live at those fire stations and we don't want to lose them, but we also have to move forward. So, I mean, we're looking 15 years down the line, but yet this transition is going to be very tough. So I think you're going to have to do what you have to do to make sure we're fully funded and we don't forget those people who have spent years in those fire departments.
Yes, sir. I'm going to follow the direction of the commissioners and like we said, it's, it's a management issue and we'll put the policies in place to make sure that we're protecting ourselves in the county.
Okay. Any other comments? Questions, discussion on this? Really appreciate, really appreciate the, the rundown and the conversation, so.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Okay, let's move on and I think, Bob, you're staying on with a loan request from Winfield Fire Department and adoption of resolution declaring intent to reimburse expenditures with debt proceeds. And Mr. Rob Brook, we have Jennifer on. Let's see.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Hello.
Today, we are here. I have Bob McCoy is here, Director of Fire and EMS. And we have Mr. Farver of the Winfield Fire Company. He's actually on the phone and he is here for any questions you may have regarding this. But we have received an application for a loan from Winfield Fire Company to borrow money through our low-interest loan program in the amount of $400,000 for a new ambulance to be purchased, to be used by the Winfield Fire Department. Just again, to repeat, the background the county offers, fire companies here within the county, the opportunity to take advantage of the county's financing program in order to borrow for their own needs. Usually it's for capital, buildings, equipment. And they do have other sources through the state, but they choose what is in their best interest at that time for the loan. If this proceeds, we'll work with Winfield Tire Company as they proceed with the purchase of the ambulance. We'd like to set up the, we'll set up the loan, the fire company with the next bond issue for reimbursement. So the term would be for five to seven years as requested by Winfield Fire Company. They currently do have three outstanding loans with us. The balance is $1,315,820.54 to be exact. And they are current, we have not had any issues or any problems with payments. We don't have any issues with fire companies. So I'm asking for the board's approval of the loan request, which will allow the fire company to proceed with purchasing the ambulance. Additionally, I'm also requesting the boards who adopt the resolution declaring the county's official intent to reimburse the expenditure with debt proceeds. And this resolution enables the fire company and the county to expend funds with the intention to reimburse with future periods or proceeds in the amount of $400,000 subject to the requirement of tax-exempt debt issuance. The county attorney has reviewed this for legal sufficiency.
Ambulance up to $400,000 now? Wow. I mean, I think it was just a couple of years ago, it was like 250 was, the price has just shot up. Is that recent? I mean.
The price of ambulances has been on the rise for quite some time. It's been years since anybody's bought one for 250. And seriously, that, you know, in order to get the, the right chassis and, and, and the, you know, the associated instrumentation and whatever in the back, 400,000 is a pretty good deal.
And I, and I, one for 250 was, was a used one, I believe.
I think that was a horse and buggy with.
That was the old, that was the old Cadillac.
Yeah.
In the metal industry, we're starting to see anything metal related spiking in costs and vehicles are, are metal intensive. Director McCoy, before I make this motion, did you have any concerns or anything you wanted to add to this?
No, sir. I have spoken with the president from Winfield at, at our monthly meetings. And with the condition of the new ambulance, it was necessary to move forward with a new order. So I recommend approval.
Right, thank you. Since Winfield is one of my four favorite volunteer fire departments in my district, I moved the Board of Commissioners approved a loan request of $400,000 by the Winfield Volunteer Fire Department and adopt the, the resolution declaring the county's intent to reimburse expenditures with debt proceeds.
Second, okay, I got a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion, questions on this, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we got 5-0. Thank you very much, Jennifer and Mr. McCoy.
Thank you.
DPW with the North Carroll Library Cooling Tower replacement. Good afternoon, Maureen.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We are here. Ask your approval to, well, recommend the supply and the installation of a new cooling tower for the North Carroll Library to Johnson Controls in the amount of $47,447.05. Johnson Controls was awarded a competitively solicited contract from Sourcewell, which is a cooperative procurement organization. This is within the budget funds. No additional funds will be needed and I'll turn it over to Justin for more information on the project.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We're here today for the decision to award Johnson Controls the replacement contract for the new cooling tower at the North Carroll Library. The purpose of the cooling tower is to process heated water created by HVAC equipment within the building. And once it's heated up, it takes it out to the cooling tower, which then is in direct contact with the air, which will lower the. which will lower the water temperature, allow it to go back into the building to finish the cooling process or the heating process. The average temperature of the water going to the cooling tower is roughly 95 degrees, hits the air, goes through the cooling tower, temperature lowers in the water, comes back into the, being roughly 70, 75, which then the HVAC equipment can produce cooler air or hot air with that 75 degrees. It's called a heat pump system. The average expectancy of a cooling tower is roughly 20 to 25 years, and the current tower is 21 years old. Johnson Controls currently holds our maintenance contract here at Carroll County for all Carroll County cooling towers at all of our locations, along with water treatment plan. The water treatment plan also extends the life of the cooling towers as we treat the water, so you get longer life out of HVAC equipment. So with that being said, what questions may you have for me?
Any questions? Pretty straightforward?
In that case, I'll move the Board of Commissioners award the project to Johnson Controls Incorporated in the amount of $47,447.05 for the new cooling tower at North Carroll Library. Can't pay five cents.
Okay, I got a motion, I got a second on the floor. Any further discussion, questions, if there are any? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, now let's talk about the temporary suspension, or request for temporary suspension of Trailblazer routes. And I see Ms. Stacy is, is Crystal coming on? I cannot hear you. I will say, check your gear, Will. Because you are the prime.
How about now?
Oh, yeah, perfect.
All right. I tell you, you just never know which one it wants to pull from. Crystal should be joining us. We're a little ahead of schedule, so I'm hoping that she'll get here shortly, but if not, I am prepared, so no need to worry. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm here today to request your approval to suspend two Trailblazer routes. We are proposing to suspend these two routes starting April 5th, until the governor restricts the, lifts the restrictions or ridership increases. The two routes up for discussion are the South Carroll Red Commuter and the second Westminster Purple Route. The Red Commuter was designed with Carroll community students in mind. This route goes from Eldersburg Walmart to Carroll community to Burke. Those are its only stops. With Carroll being closed to in-person classes, the demand for this route just isn't there. The bus makes eight loops, runs approximately 250 miles a day, as compared to the other Trailblazer routes, which run between 80 and 180 miles, and it has had an average of eight trips per week since January. This translates to about $225 per trip, not to mention the wear and tear on the vehicle. The few people that are currently using this route will still be able to call and schedule demand response rides until the route is reopened. The second purple route has about the same ridership with an average of eight trips per week. The difference between this route and the Red Commuter is we have two purple routes in Westminster. The purple routes are both the same. They go to the exact same stops. One bus just starts 30 minutes after the other. Therefore, but when we're running both, the stops are every 30 minutes. But by suspending the second one, the wait time will go back to an hour. The plus side to having the purple route still running is we will be able to clearly see the ridership increase and determine when to reopen the second route. And the few people that are using that second route will still have that Trailblazer option. The purple route concentrates on medical buildings, which is the main cause for ridership being so low right now. The current cost for the second route is about 180 per trip, where the first purple route is about $80 per trip. Don't get me wrong, ridership isn't great for any of our routes, but these two are the least effective right now, and are both due to COVID with the college and the medical building still being closed. We don't want to eliminate these routes. All we want to do is suspend them until the ridership need is back.
Any questions, comments on this?
On the second purple route, couldn't, could you suspend that as well and handle it with on-demand like you're doing with the other route from south, from the other area?
You mean to suspend both purple routes? We could.
Well, could the ridership be taken with on-demand that way? And would that save us some money in wear and tear? Because the one that you're saying, what, 250 miles? That's a lot.
The red route is 250, yes.
Right, right, right. So the on-demand would definitely help on that one.
Absolutely.
So, but on this one, if we suspended both those and just went with on-demand, would that serve the same purpose? Because number one, I don't like the hour wait time, because I hate that, but but I just think it might be a better idea, solution to go with suspending both those routes and have on-demand. But I'm not the expert, you guys are, so.
I'm going to defer to Crystal. As far as demand response goes, I would think that can handle it since demand response is so well below normal right now, but I will defer to her on that.
Good afternoon. Yeah, we absolutely can handle anyone that needs, that needs those rides. They are not going to be supported by, by the Trailblazer. And obviously, you know, we don't like the hour wait either, and it's why the 30-minute loop was so exciting, but right now, since there's just so few people, there's really no one depending on that 30 minutes, and it would really save a lot of resources at this point to suspend.
So can we, I mean, with that said, would you recommend then expanding the suspension of the two purple routes and the one south route, the red route, with the intent of bringing them back when ridership increases with the lifting of a state of emergency in the future?
Yes, I would absolutely recommend that, and with demand response, we will know the increase for the Trailblazer too. We'll know where these people are getting picked up and where they're going, so we'll know whether the Trailblazer would be effective again.
Now, what, the way this is written, it would be allowing for the suspension, and the way you wrote it was with the intent of when the governor lifts the state of emergency, but it's not an automatic that the routes will come back. I mean, either you're going to come back to us to lift the suspension, or...
What's that?
I would think.
Yeah, or you want to put it into this, you know, motion where it's automatically done after lifting of suspension.
I'm really fine with either way. Whichever you guys would prefer, we handle that.
Well, we can leave it as is, and then get your expertise coming back to lifting the suspension on if things need to be modified. You know, okay.
That sounds good. We can come back.
Are there any other comments, questions on this? Okay.
So you're okay with suspending both of the Westminster Purple routes and the red route, right?
The Red Commuter, yes.
Red Commuter, okay. So I'll make the motion that we suspend both Westminster Purple routes and the Red Commuter route at this time and until, well, until you come back before us, I guess.
Okay, so we have a motion. It was a modified motion and a, now three routes, right?
Yes.
Two purple, one red. We have a motion. We have a second. Any other comments, questions? All in favor? Okay, five oh. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Stacy and I guess Jeff too. Okay. Let's move on to solar. We got, we got Tom on. I'm not sure who he is, but that's right.
He's still working?
I don't know. We got Brenda. We got Chris. Are we expecting others?
I think Mr. Boyd is going.
Jay, I was going to say Jay kept popping in and out, and we got Laura coming on.
It's possible. I think, I think we can move forward without her, Commissioner.
Okay, either way. You want to start?
Yes, sir, I would, please. A little parting shot from me, I believe, today, but we're back before you today to talk about the proposed solar amendment that you directed staff to proceed for. In December 10th, we were before you with a request to move to the Planning and Zoning Commission. You did direct us to do that. At that time, we had proposed concepts that we had met with the board twice on and gone over with you regarding proposed solar within the ag zone, agricultural zone, on remaining portions of developed land. We took those concepts, we codified them. We then moved to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review and comment back to you. We actually met with the Planning and Zoning Commission five times for discussions regarding this. Each one of those times, the Planning and Zoning Commission allowed public input, of which they got, you know, the, mainly the solar community, the solar providers, responded numerous times on those meetings we had with the Planning and Zoning Commission. We also had one of the planning and zoning commissions where a representative from the solar industry, who represents them in a broader perspective, not as a provider strictly, but, you know, as an overseer, solar for the solar community, and somebody from the ag community also participated with the Planning and Zoning Commission on a question-and-answer format. What we're here today to you, to do, is present to you our findings with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and ultimately, what we're requesting from you today will be to proceed to a public hearing with this proposal. You have received three items, I do believe, one which is the actual draft text amendment, which actually has the concepts that we presented to you, codified into code. We also provided you with a feedback and response by topic. This is a compilation of the comments that came in from various entities, and Brenda was, was so resourceful as to break them out as they are related to the different code, code products that we are showing you. And you can see there's a feedback that we got, and then the response that we provided to the board. And then the final item that you should have received, very, within the last day or so, was actually a memo from Ms. Eisenberg to the Board of Commissioners regarding the Planning and Zoning Commission's findings. And their findings were that they were in agreement with the proposal as it stands, which again, I want to remind you is those remaining portions, which are five acres and greater, that would be considered for the use of community solar. One item I do want to bring to your attention is throughout the Planning and Zoning Commission process, we had the solar community who was requesting that we consider not only community solar, which has a very specific definition under state law, which we referenced, but also a type of solar use which is called meter aggregation. The difference is, in very general terms, the community solar is geared towards individual folks, the individual property owners, residential property owners subscribing to the use of solar. The meter aggregation is more related to nonprofits, county governments, and agriculture, and their use of it. And exactly what that means is you can have one meter, well, you can have multiple meters, but the solar industry will feed you, and you can take credit for use under, you know, one meter aggregation. So you could have multiple county buildings that are under one of these solar arrays. So we investigated this quite extensively. We had a brief discussion with the planning commission about it, and staff is recommending that the commissioners include the meter aggregation within this proposal. That is the one fundamental difference in the concepts we presented to you than with the code that you're looking at. Everything else pretty much follows the concepts that we presented to you last year on numerous occasions, so we'll get into a little bit more detail on that, but I just wanted to make sure that's clear. The other item that was discussed quite extensively by the Planning and Zoning Commission was the creation of a permanent easement. We had direction from the board, Board of Commissioners, to look at preserving the lands that were left over, or preserving the lands that were associated with these proposed solar arrays. What we have drafted, and what you'll see in the code, was that a permanent easement will be established on the remainder of the remainder. And so any land that's left over after a maximum of 20 acres is utilized for solar would be put into a permanent easement, which then would be held by the Board of County Commissioners. We are not including that acreage, which is part of the solar array. That is not what we're proposing in this text, so that, when that solar array is done, those lands would then be available to the property owner for use, uses that may be allowed in the agricultural zone. That is the way the language is currently drafted. One item that the planning commission did discuss briefly was the fact of the permanency of the easement. And they did not recommend changing it at the very end, but they did have a discussion about that, so I just want that, you understand that kind of full disclosure, that that was an item that was discussed quite extensively about the easement. The solar industry also felt that the permanency of the easement could be problematic for them, but the staff moved forward with the permanent easement on the remainder of the remainder, not on the up to 20 acres that the solar array would encompass. So with that, before I turn it over to Brenda to review with you the text, the actual text of the code, is there any questions regarding the process that we've been through? I thought it was very good. We had a lot of input, and the public weighed in very extensively with the planning commission. So I think that part of it and the transparency, Brenda has been very good at putting everything we've discussed, everything we drafted out on the web, you know, out for access to everybody, the solar community and the public alike. Any questions to this point, Commissioners? Okay, Brenda, do you want to review the text, draft text amendment with the board, please?
I was going to say something, Tom. You're getting pretty good at this. In a couple of years, you'll be really good.
Thank you. Well, unfortunately, I won't have an opportunity to get really good, it appears.
Oh, man.
I'll watch others become really good. Brenda?
If I could be made presenter, I will, I'll share my screen so you can look at the text on screen as we're talking.
Can you go ahead and get started, Brenda, ahead of the screen?
I am just waiting for my screen to come up.
Yeah.
Presenter.
Okay, go ahead.
Brenda, we made you presenter.
I know. My computer's just moving slowly, bringing, bringing up my shared screen.
All right, how about we just proceed? Commissioners, do you all have it in front of you? There we go. Okay, go right ahead then, Brenda.
All right, so I'll run through the changes quickly, because I'm sure you've, you've had a chance to look at this. There are some changes in here that are not strictly the community solar amendment, so I'll touch on them briefly as well. There are several that are commissioner-requested changes that are reflected in here as well. So if you start at the beginning under definitions, of course, we added the definition for the, it's called Community Solar Energy Generating System by the state, so that's what we're calling the definition, referring to the state definition. And the, that sort of syntax has been modified in the other existing solar definitions to be consistent. And we added a definition of meter aggregation, which is defined in Maryland code, you know, regulations, and so it's referencing that. And on both of them, we've referenced July 1st, so that if the cap changes for the 2 megawatt cap change, it would be up to you to make a decision if you wanted to increase the cap or not. So because we're talking about putting this in on remaining portions, we've added both community solar and the meter aggregation to permitted uses under, in the ag district. Now we're in exist, in the existing solar text here, and again, the syntax was changed to make community solar energy generating systems consistent. We've removed the variance ability for the size of the ground mounted systems in the ag. It was requested that we also allow ground-mounted facilities in the ag district to be allowed in the front yards as well, because there are some properties that are set way back from the road, and they could be done without actually being what would, how it would look in a normal, you know, front yard that isn't set back very far, but we're, we've removed the ability to do variance if you do put it in the front yard. We've previously inserted the ability, kind of an acknowledgement that if a property owner wanted to have an agreement with their neighbor that they, you know, they had some kind of solar access easement, in other words, their neighbor wouldn't have an agreement with their neighbor that they, you know, they had some kind of solar access easement. In other words, their neighbor wouldn't block the sun. That was the private transaction between them and their neighbor. So because it's a private transaction, we're not really involved. We decided to remove that. Then we get to this section where we actually added all the requirements associated with the community solar. And you'll see in the yellow highlight there is language that we added so that for the purposes of of the code here, all of the this would also apply to the aggregate net metering. So we have some standard stuff here, you know, that this is the property should primarily agriculture. On B, see, it's in on remaining portions, five acres and greater. We inserted a requirement that the maximum acres that could be used for solar is 20 acres, which is fit not without a problem, given the standard, you know, how much that takes to do community solar at two megawatts. Includes the permanent easement on the portion that's left over after the community solar is developed. Of course, the site plan is required, but to be approved by the planning commission. If they they can planning commission can put additional requirements on that. If if they find there's a need based on the character in the in the Ag District. They, you know, we have provisions here for environmental resources and not removing forested areas that we have defined in our code and not impeding on stream buffer floodplain and wetlands with no variance to that. Co-location, that hasn't changed since what you've seen before. So we're still saying they neither do pollinator friendly for some type of agricultural use beneath the panels and that they are responsible for controlling suppressing noxious weeds and invasive plants. We have the landscape buffer requirement. And we're not referring to anything specific in the landscape manual, rather, what we're saying is you just need to screen this year round. And then we're trying to create something that looks like it belongs in the Ag District as opposed to, you know, a commercial type of landscaping. For bulk requirements, this was something that we did change rather than 35 feet from the center line, the setback is 40 feet from the property line. So it's a little bit further back and no variance to that provision. Height limit is 15 feet. And we did add to this that the planning commission can modify the height limit depending on what proposed use they have underneath. So if they're going to graze cattle, they may need it to be higher than 15 feet. Underlying at the infrastructure and utility lines need to be underground where wherever the solar developer has control over that. And then, of course, the abandonment and decommissioning requirements are all still in there where that would require them to have a bond with the county to make sure that we have the ability to go in and remove all the equipment if they abandon it and do not do it themselves. That's a quick run through the draft text.
I have some comments to make on this. Brenda, first of all, you know, you have the date of the ordinance. I would suggest we make that January 1st, 2020 is the date. That way, nobody's going to be going in all of a sudden rushing to get something put in this designation just to put their solar pounds or whatever on. I mean, I've seen it before happening and everything we do, right? Mad rush all of a sudden. I think we have enough properties there. We we make not the date of the ordinance, but we make the date January 1st, 2020, 2021, sorry. And any, sorry, wrong date, a year off. 2021.
We do have 2020, so they wouldn't be able to, it already would. They can't come in and do something different before this July because it was actually 2020 that we have dated. Is that, does that work for you?
And what was that again?
The it's the under the definitions, we have it effective, the the definition as of July 1st, 2020, not 2021.
2020?
Yeah.
And so if everything's effective by then, that would be fine. But I was just, you know, you have like, you know, shall be located only on existing remaining portion of five acres or greater, and you have the existing date. If it's 2020 or early, I mean, if it's that early, that's fine. That's good. One other.
Commissioner, yeah, if I could, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna fill in the date of the ordinance when it's adopted. So you you can't do anything, you can't create these after the ordinance is or adopted. I mean, it has to be created, excuse me, after the date of the ordinance. So you can't create them post ordinance to to accommodate this. So it will be just existing up to when you adopt this. Is that, is that what you'd like, Commissioner?
You can't do it at all right now on on Ag Zone.
Well, that's correct, Commissioner.
You can't do it at all right now. So you have to wait till this comes into effect before you can do anything.
Well, but what we're talking about, Commissioners, you can't you you can't create a remaining portion post the adoption of this to accommodate solar. So you'll have all those existing remaining portions will be eligible. After you adopt it, per what we have here, you will not be able to create a remaining portion to do solar. So it's only the existing inventory of remaining portions up to the date of adoption that are eligible for this. That is that is that what the board would like, I guess, is what I would ask.
I I just want to have it ahead of time. So now this is coming up. You can't rush in and create that remainder at this time. I mean, it has to be as of a date when this was started, not when it's adopted.
Yeah, that's what Tom's saying.
Well, not quite. I mean, I think, you know, I'm hoping you won't do this, but if you take two months to adopt it, somebody could walk in the door today and do something to create, although I don't think they get through our process. But let's say hypothetically, they could. If you'd like, we could put in there rather than the date of the ordinance, we could put in there similar to what we have in the definition of the July of 2020. So everything is basically frozen then. That is that is up to your discretion, I believe.
That that meets my fine, yes. Another thing I would like to this is open to all zoning. I think you have it. Let's see, you shall be permitted in all districts?
And it only applies in the agricultural zone.
Well, under, you know, the first one, B, number one, this you shall be permitted in all districts. Should we reference as being specific what it it could be used in industrial, commercial? Second page on.
Oh, that's accessory, I believe.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Commissioner, that's accessory uses, that would be for like a house or individual property use. Is allowed in all districts.
Okay, but it covers all districts then, right? Resident accessory use.
Now, the community solar would only be allowed in the Ag District. As it's written elsewhere in the ordinance.
Does it read that way?
All of the text that's in black is what's existing code in the in our code right now. So only the red is what was changed. So you can see under B there, it says accessory at the end. And then, so when it says the use should be permitted in all districts, that's referring specifically to accessory uses. And that's like Jay said, that's the way it is right now in our current code.
Do we need to clarify it?
I don't, Commissioners, I don't believe you do. Again, what this is, this is what's complicated about changing code. When we change code, it affects numerous sections of the code a lot of times. And the only thing that it's being affected here in this section is we we renamed this solar generating system. So this remains unaffected by the changes you're making. And again, this is related just to the accessory uses. The community solar is a completely different beast, so to speak, and it is referred to and just applies to the agricultural zone. So I know it may seem confusing, but in implementation by the zoning office and and others, I I think it's it's very, it's clear.
All right, one last one I have here is on electric on miscellaneous provisions that we put something in that no use of eminent domain to cross property lines or if they cross property lines without just compensation. This is not in this one, but it happened in in the state of Maryland in Somerset County. Kevin Anderson spent about $200,000 in legal fees going through this. They put a, it was a lot in behind him. They came across the property. Basically, he won the case, but he didn't get any legal compensation and or compensation for them crossing the property. They did it with eminent domain. And I guess I'm strong personal property rights. I believe we have to have something in the eminent domain cannot be used to cross property lines for lines run from this facility to another.
I I would say, Commissioner, that let us check with the legal department and check into all that. And if that is something that we have the capability to do, if the board is in agreement, we will, we will insert that.
Okay, I just want to.
Yeah, that's not something we looked into, but if if it's possible that we can put that in there legally and we will, we will put that in there if the board is, that's your wish.
Okay, and just one last one. I'm sorry, I was a little.
That was the last one.
I read this thing. On E, community solar generating systems and agriculture zones. Now, Tom, it's I should have says agriculture zones are permitted, should be agriculture remainder zones, or is that part of the overall topic it's in?
So which which Commissioner, would you, which one were you referring to? Number one there, E1?
This is page six. Community solar generating system in agriculture zones, it should, should it be agriculture remainders or something reflects what it's actually about?
This is just saying that in the agricultural zones, you know, a net metering can be used at the same way that a community solar can. And we already specified down further in the small B that it's on remaining portions. So we should be covered by by that, you know, by its remaining portions.
But it should be clarified all the way through?
This is the language that our county attorney's office suggested that we use, what's in yellow there.
And it does say there should be no variance of this of this provision.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Could be spelled out, otherwise it's misinterpreted later and okay, I'm gone.
You have one more.
Okay.
So you're looking for to move this to public hearing, is that, is that right?
That's correct, Commissioners. We're ready if you're ready.
Can be when we put this, I guess this is on our website already.
Absolutely.
The second part where you have all the comments and the answers to the comments, can that be put on a website as well? Because I think that would be extremely helpful for anyone that's looking.
That's already on the webpage.
Okay. I don't have to say anything about that.
I still would like to see the whole property put into a permanent easement at that point, you know, even with the solar on it, it makes it a ag preserved property than instead just the portion remaining, but they had a major discussion about that, correct?
We had a significant discussion about the permanency easement and then the 20 acres. And what I would say, Commissioners, is the one issue I have with that is if you do that, in some ways, you're almost accepting the solar as an agricultural use, because what we're saying on the in the easement on the remainder of the remainder that we only want agricultural uses on there. So by putting the 20 acres in there and then putting solar on it, it's almost like we're contradicting ourselves in some ways because we're allowing that solar. And in the easement, it says we only want agricultural use. So I I think personally that that would be a little conflict. The other thing is the solar companies are indicating that, you know, it may be problematic for these folks to put their their remaining port remainers or remainers in agricultural use only in easements. This does add a little bit of relief, whether it's whether you feel it's necessary or not, but to the property that when they're done the solar, that 20 acres then can be used for whatever is permitted in the agricultural zone. So it's not a complete blanket easement across the entire property. So again, your discretion, but I think the first issue I brought up with the with the slight conflict there is is a greater one that I would say we want maybe want to stay away from.
Don't totally agree with it, but I understand it.
Okay.
Well, there's no other comments or questions. I'll make the motion to Board of Commissioners direct staff to move forward to schedule a public hearing on the proposed amendment.
I got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
A second. I got a couple of seconds. Okay, anything else? Okay, all in favor? Okay, 5-0. Thank you very much, Brenda and entire team, Tom, as always.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
I guess Chris and Jay, you're just a strong silent type, but that's okay.
Very good job.
Okay. Moving into open admin, first off, do we have any callers?
Commissioner.
We have no callers. Yes, Roberta?
Before we do that, I unfortunately, our public work staff would like to discuss the idea of can of suspending both purple routes again with the board in reflection upon both being suspended. They would like maybe you to reconsider that idea. So before we go on to administrative stuff, if you wouldn't mind giving them another five minutes, that would be.
Absolutely. I want to get this right.
Yeah, go ahead. I mean, but I did ask if you're okay with that for the motion.
It's all about getting it right. Stacy or Jeff, either one.
No, thank you. I'll just start this off. Thank you, Commissioners. No, in in Commissioner, you're 100% correct, and we can roll back the tape if needed to confirm that was your statement. But no, Stacy and Crystal sat back afterwards and just evaluated. It was kind of a it was a great opportunity to look at further refinement of some of the some of the recommendations that we made to the board. And but then after some additional assessment, we also really do, you know, there's a side of our of transit that we look at from the financial aspect of things. You know, the the ridership, but also we have to take into account our customers or the citizens that do ride this and how they how they move around between our systems, between one system, you know, one of our routes to the other and who it really impacts. And so, you know, Crystal and Stacy went, you know, they they started talking and realized there really the impacts of the customer service could be. We want to bring that to your attention. I know we've made a final decision from the board, but we'd like to assess it again. So I'm gonna pass over to Stacy and Crystal to talk about the the impacts now that we're able to digest it and look at this. So thank you for your time.
Absolutely.
Hi, Commissioners. I do apologize. You threw me off my game. I wasn't ready. Initially, it sounded like a great idea. Then I looked into it a little bit more and I talked to Crystal and I started to panic a little. So essentially, the the purple route is now the only route that goes to the senior centers and the Westminster Senior Center and is only handles, you know, certain residential area around the senior center and the black route doesn't do that anymore. That was the whole purpose of why we redesigned it so that things work the way they do. And by getting rid of both routes, we will not be able to make it to the senior center or those residents at the moment. I mean, demand response could handle it. I just think it's a better way to get there. It's a cheaper way to get there. They can get on at the stop and be on their way. So initially, it sounded good and then I thought about it. So I apologize for having to come back and make you rethink it.
We'll blame Commissioner Fraser for this.
He is, he is the one that threw you off your game. So so do I have a motion to suspend the one purple line and south line or red line or whatever it is down in South Carroll? That's what you're asking for, correct?
Yes, the second purple route and the red commuter route, correct.
Okay.
Just just that, just as a point of order before you automatically make that motion, I'm not sure you can. I I think you've got to. I I think I think there's, I don't know if Tim's on or not, but I don't think you can just make a motion to just overturn a motion. I don't know if Tim's on or not, but I don't think you can just make a motion to just overturn a motion that was
Well, we, we can, it may not be correct.
True, I I just think you better check it first.
So, I've already spoken with Tim. Yes, you can, the, is, the mover has to be someone who voted on the positive side, and it was a five oh vote, so any of the five of you could bring the topic back for discussion and ask for a a change, so.
I'd like to bring the topic back for discussion, and with everything I've heard, I'd like to make the motion that we suspend the purple line, purple which line? Two, and red?
Commuter.
Red line?
Red commuter.
Red commuter. That's it.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay. I appreciate it. I got a motion and I got a second by my favorite Commissioner, and I'll just leave it at that. And all in favor?
We have it right now, Stacy?
Yes, I do apologize, thank you very much.
Okay, and and honestly, I appreciate the, the work you're doing and and reflecting on what was said and coming back. That, that's huge. So I really do appreciate that, that work.
I'll try not to have any more good ideas during session.
Yeah, we're not used to coming away from the board of commissioners more than what we're asking for, so. No, thank, thank, thank you all again for your time, and I'll echo Stacy and Crystal from both in-house and with our vendor. They do care about our customer, our citizens and put them first and really care about everybody who rides. And and I appreciate that we're taking the extra moment after we've evaluated this. You know, it keeps us on the right path, and we want to be sure that we keep the citizens happy that are riding this the route. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. Okay, any callers one more time? We have no callers. Open admin. The only open admin comment or discussion direction I want to make sure we give to Chris Wim and the team in preparation for the work sessions. We talked about going down to the Reagan room for the work sessions. And all of us were going to be there. The question is, are we committing ourselves at this time for all of us being there? And if not, then Chris has to work, which you, which you, will work, the virtual piece of this. But can we commit to either all of us being there or not? I know three of us agreed, I mean, Eric?
Can't hear you. Continue virtually, please.
Okay, and Commissioner Wance?
Yeah, I'm good downstairs. I, I, I'm not, I'm not too fond of the air movement down there, but we'll, we'll see that that hopefully is taken care of. But I'm, yeah, I think it's, I'll, I'll be involved in the same room.
Okay, sounds good. Chris and Roberta, you have your direction. Okay, anything else for open admin? Seeing none, I know there's
We have a set of minutes to approve?
Yep, I need approval of the closed minutes from March eighteenth, twenty one on land acquisition.
Motion to approve those minutes.
Okay, I got a motion and a second to approve the minutes on land acquisition. All in favor?
Aye.
Got five oh. Let's go into agendas. For the last week of March, at least the last few days. On March twenty ninth, Commissioner Fraser will be eating a lot of food at the Westminster Mission Barbecue Grand Opening.
I'll make the sacrifice.
You'll make the sacrifice, okay, on Tuesday, March
I, I'm, I'm supposed to attend that as well, so in the interest of making sure we're not violating something, put me down on that one.
Okay. Nobody else? Okay. On Tuesday, March thirtieth, Shockville Board of Visitors meeting, Commissioner Wance. We will be going into open session at nine o'clock with a continuation of agency budget hearings at nine for a few hours, and then at one P M on Tuesday, we will be continuing agency budget hearings.
Now, I'm gonna, just wanted to go to Reagan Room, but I have a, kind of family issues I have to deal with that day. I'm gonna try to hit virtually when I can. From that, I won't, if I can pick up mobile service somewhere.
No, it's here. This is agency briefing.
Yeah, you'll be in.
Work session.
It'll be okay, okay, work session.
But regardless, you still may not be here, so.
Yeah.
Okay. At least I didn't say irregardless. Okay, March thirty first on Wednesday, last day of March, Planning and Zoning Work Session, Commissioner Wance at six P M, Carroll County Public Schools, navigating difficult waters, speaking engagement, I'll be attending that. Looking forward to, to sharing some thoughts that evening, Thursday.
Are you speaking there? Are you speaking there?
I'm speaking, yes.
Isn't that your, isn't that your topic?
Yes.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yes. Um, actually, I, I think the, the entire session may be, that may be the title, navigating difficult waters. And we all have different topics.
Okay.
Yep.
Just curious. Can't wait to see it.
And I can share the agenda if you're nice. Okay, Thursday, April first, this is not April Fools, we will be having a nine o'clock agency budget hearings. And then continue at one P M with more agency budget hearings. Friday, April second, we will be closed in
Hope, hope, stand by on that April the first for a minute. Ten A M, April the first, is the Sheriff's Department Awards Ceremony. I've RSVP'd to attend that. So I may not be for those work sessions, but I I will obviously review them, but I know that's scheduled for ten A M.
You're right, and I'm not sure if I RSVP'd or not. I can't remember, I don't think I did. Okay, we'll take a look, but good, good catch, thank you. Thursday afternoon, agency budget hearings on Friday, as I was going, was, we will be closed in observance for Good Friday. And Commissioner Fraser has the Easter message, or at least the podcast, on Sunday, April fourth.
I'm trying to get the Easter Bunny to come in as a special guest, but it's very difficult, the guy's very busy. It's tough.
I thought he was gonna be in Tony Town or something, but you know, okay. April fifth, got nothing. On Tuesday, April sixth, we have virtual meeting, let's see. Okay, well, we got an open session, wow. Haven't had one of these in a while. We got Mr. Singer coming in, we have public hearing for annual plan for fiscal year twenty twenty one, Carroll County Bureau of Housing. We have a request for approval, submission of the F Y twenty two Youth and Family Engagement Program. We have a request for a library roof change order at the, yeah, the public libraries, I think up in Westminster. That's why I had one of this. Bit approval, request for replacement of radar units for the Sheriff's Department. Quest approval for purchase of census eye pearl residential water meters, looking forward to knowing all about that. Then we have a briefing, it'll probably be a continuing briefing on our solid waste revenue and expense budget detail. Follow on from this morning's conversation. We will be going into our first work session, and this will be down in the Reagan Room at one P M on April sixth. On Wednesday, Commissioner Wance will be attending the Planning and Zoning Work Session, another six P M work session. Interesting. Thursday, we will be going to open session at nine o'clock with a
I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure that's correct, Ed.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense, does it?
Yeah, there's no, I don't see a planning commission meeting, which is unusual. I don't know why there's two work sessions back to back.
No, I, I agree, that sounds wrong, so.
And that, and that could affect, that could affect our, our work sessions, so somebody needs to check on that, whether, maybe they canceled a work, maybe they canceled public or a planning and zoning, I don't know.
We will check, because, yeah, I, I did not sound right as soon as I said, so. Thursday, we do have another work session down in the Reagan Room starting at nine o'clock. And continuing on throughout the day, reconvening at one P M. On Fri- I don't think it's Friday, I think it's Saturday. Sykesville First Pitch Baseball Opening Day, I will be attending, warming up the left arm, okay. And then Commissioner Boucher will have the podcast on April eleventh.
Yeah, that baseball thing's actually Saturday, April the tenth, I think. Because I'm, I'm doing the same thing in Tony Town at, at nine A M.
Right, I, I, I believe it is on Saturday. And probably all communities are gonna be the first pitch, so. Okay, where are we? I need a motion to adjourn our open session, then what do I do?
Close for the land acquisition.
Close for land acquisition.
Motion to go into close for land acquisition.
Second. Okay, I got a motion closing, to go into land acquisition, got a second.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Got all that? Relax, I need a favor, I need a favorable vote, all in favor? All in favor, aye, okay. And then a motion to
Motion to adjourn after land acquisition.
I got a motion to adjourn after land acquisition, I got a second on the floor, all in favor? Commissioner Wance will be staying the night?